October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, public meeting of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Dee Oliver, and I am the chairman of the commission. And before we get started, I've asked chairman, actually, I'm the chairman, I've asked the Commissioner Edmund to lead us in prayer, and it'll be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Horsley.
President's daughter who comes to you today, thanking you for your guidance and work as we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and minds, experience goodness, right thought and speech. Help us remember our responsibilities to serve our country, laid in sight, guided by understanding, wisdom and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote common good as we work together to the betterment of our great city. Let's trust that we serve these lessons on our deliberations and on our advocacy.
Do you want me to... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, in principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. And now, we're going to have Commissioner Klein is going to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. We have Jack Wall, a civil engineer from the Rose Hall District; George Alcarez, building contractor from Beach District; Don Horsley, farmer and member-at-large; Dee Oliver, chairman, funeral director and member-at-large; David Weiner, commercial salesman from Kempsville District; Michael Inman, attorney and member-at-large; David Redman, commercial real estate broker from Bayside District; Whitney Graham, real estate developer from Lynn Haven District; and myself, Robin Klein, social worker from Centerville District.
Thank you. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Bobby DeHaan, the Planning Director, and he's going to introduce his staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting with the planning staff, we have, starting this side, we have Wadaw, Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Marshall Coleman, Will Miller, and Summer Peebles. We also have Tori Eisenberg with the City Attorney's Office. On the other side of the room, we also have Ashby Moss, Bill Lanfair, Kevin Kemp, clerking for us today, Lynn Ronker, Carol Dozier, and Linda Cartwright, and as well as Deputy City Attorney, Kay Wilson is with us. Ms. Wilson, just for the record, will leave the meeting, and Ms. Eisenberg will take her place sometime after the first portion of the meeting. Just also for the, to clarify for the Commissioners, as noted, we are recording the meeting for, so that we can do the verbatim. If, as you're speaking, please turn on your microphone so that it can be heard and recorded for the, for the posting. And then, when you're not speaking, please turn the microphone off, because there is feedback, the space isn't ideally set up to allow for all the microphones to be on at the same time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, our clerk is now going to read the rules, and we'll get started with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the order of the business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask, are there any requests to defer or withdraw an item on the agenda? Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendations. The Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as the Civic League or homeowners association, in which case they will have ten minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disprove an application will be made by the City Council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly.
So with that, we're going to get started. We do not have any items today to be withdrawn or deferred, so we're going to move right on to our next order of business, which will be address those items that have been placed on the consent agenda. And the Vice Chair, David Weiner, is going to handle this portion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we have eight items on the consent agenda. First one is Item One, AeroFit Human Performance Conditionally Used Permit for Home Occupation at twelve oh nine Funnel Street, Council District, Bayside. Is there an applicant for this item? Please come forward. I'm sorry, please come forward. Great. Please state your name for the record.
Robert Aerosmith.
Isis Aerosmith.
And do you agree with all the conditions?
We do.
Great, thank you. You can have a seat. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Redman is going to read this into the record for us.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. This is an application of AeroFit Human Performance LLC for a conditional use permit for a home occupation specifically for personal fitness training. The applicant intends to perform this use in a six hundred square foot accessory structure, meaning a shed or an outbuilding, on his property, on their property, in the Lakeview Park neighborhood. There are a number of, of conditions that protect the adjacent homeowners and the neighborhood in general, specifically that there's to be no amplified music that's, you know, that can be heard from other people. It's a very common thing to have home occupations. We do it routinely for, for daycare, for instance, and other uses. There is no opposition. The staff supports this application, and the commission concurs with its consent. Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. The next item is Item Number Three, Ruth Wilson, subdivision variance, Section four point four, the subdivision regulations, at eight sixty-five and eight seventy-seven Sandbridge Road, Princess Anne District. Is the applicant with us? Please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Ruth, Ruth Wilson.
Do you agree with the conditions? Everything with the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. You can have a seat. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Horsley is going to read this into the record. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. The applicant is, is, is asking for variance today for, to re-conform these lots, to re-line these lots, so to make them more conforming. These lots were built, these homes were built in nineteen ten, nineteen sixty-five, and back then, the regulations didn't apply as they do now. But neither one of these lots has at least a one acre that's, that's needed to be above the flood plain. So therefore, they are reconfiguring the lot lines to, to make it so both of these lots can be independent of each other and can, can be, become more conformant. So, there's no, there's no opposition to this application, and it seems like a very simple thing, it fixing some problems that occurred way back years before all the lot regulations came into effect. So, I, I think Ms. Wilson would be very, very appreciative if we go ahead and approve this, and that's the reason we put it on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horsley. The next item is Item Number Six, Valvoline Incident Oil Change and Conditionally Use Permit for Automotive Service at five one oh one Virginia Beach Boulevard, Kempsville District. Do we have applicant? There we are.
Mr. Weiner, thank you. Members of the commission, my name's RJ Nutter, I'm an attorney, representing Valvoline. The conditions are acceptable, Mr. Weiner, but there is one thing that staff and Mr. Wall asked me to comment on, and that has to do with, if I could have the site plan for just a second? Perfect. The, we don't have pointers here. One thing Mr. Wall asked us to look at is the area to the, I guess, to the north of our access, even the utility area in there, is if we could, instead of paving that, if we could look at maintaining that as a grassy area. And we're accept, that's acceptable to us, subject to us getting all the fully engineering reports, because we don't know if there's anything, drop inlets or what else might be in there. But if there's nothing in there to prevent that, we would be putting in grass in that area, and we'd be paving only the shared accessway and the, and our access into the facility. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Weiner.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Wall is going to read this into the record for us.
The applicant is requesting a conditionally used permit for an automobile service station to provide oil change services within a new building with two bay doors at the corner of Virginia Beach Boulevard in North Witch Duck Road. The subject site is in the West Campus District of the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. The submitted landscape plan depicts screening along the southern side of the property where it abuts the multifamily apartment dwellings, along the eastern property line to screen the bay doors from North Witch Duck Road, and along the western property line abutting mixed retail uses. Additional plant materials also proposed along the front edge of Virginia Beach Boulevard. The proposed development will result in the closure of two of the three existing ingress-egress points along the boulevard. The ingress-egress points on Witch Duck Road will remain a shared access easement for use by both the parcel and the parcel to the west. Per the city zoning ordinance, automobile service station requires two parking spaces for each service bay, plus three additional spaces for employee parking. The proposed eight parking spaces exceed the parking requirements by one space. Staff recommends approval. The applicant is amenable to the conditions, and therefore, we place this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, would that be Condition ten, which would be worded somewhat that, if possible, that the area identified as the utility easement shall be maintained in turf? Are we adding that condition?
I, I would be fine with that.
Okay. It'll make it clearer if we add it as a condition.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Nutter is okay with that, too?
And the way it's worded is fine, the way you worded it?
Yeah, that's fine. It may not be exactly that way, but that's the intent.
Okay, move on to Item Number Seven. Hal and Deborah Willard, street closer adjacent to eight thirty-three South Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District. Is the applicant, there he is.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner, Mr. Weiner. Madam Chair, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Mr. and Mrs. Willard. Appreciate Mr. Lanfair's work on this standard alley closure in Croatan. All four conditions are acceptable to the applicant, and if you want to save time, the same is true for the next application. Thank you.
Let's move on to that. Is there any opposition to this being on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Alcarez is going to read this into the record for us.
Sure, thank you. This applicant requests to close half of the fifteen-foot wide platted unnamed and unimproved alley adjacent to eight thirty-three South Atlantic Avenue totaling three hundred and seventy-five square feet, and incorporate it into their adjacent residential lot identified as Lot eighteen, Block fourteen, Croatan Beach, Beach District. Staff recommends approval. The Planning Commission supports the conditions as stated, and is on the consent agenda for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next one is Item Number Eight, John and Deanna Hess, street closer adjacent eight thirty-seven South Atlantic Street, Beach District. I know we heard you before, but you gotta say it, Mr. Bradon, please.
How do you say ditto?
That's fine.
For the record, Eddie Bradon, the applicant supports the conditions and appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being on a consent agenda?
Hearing none, Mr. Alcarez has volunteered again.
Sure, ditto. The applicant requests closure of the fifteen-foot wide platted unnamed and unimproved alley adjacent to eight thirty-seven South Atlantic Avenue totaling three hundred and seventy-five square feet to incorporate into the adjacent residential lot identified as Lot seventeen, Block fourteen, Croatan Beach, Beach District. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission supports this for consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next two items are the short-term rental that have been put on consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications for a conditionally used permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda, as these applications meet the applicable requirements of Section two four one point two of the zoning ordinance. Staff supports the application, and there is no known opposition, opposition to this request for Items Number Nine and Seventeen. In saying that, I would move for approval on the consent agenda items one, three, six, seven, eight, nine, and seventeen.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by George Alcarez.
I will call for the vote verbally. Alcarez?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
And Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
All right. By a recorded vote of nine to zero, agenda items Number One, Three, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Seventeen, with one condition added to agenda item Number Six, have been approved by consent.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank all the applicants today that had an item on our consent agenda and attending today's hearing. These items will be scheduled for hearing at City Council at a later date. Thank you all for coming.
At this time, those that were approved on the consent agenda, please, if you can, exit the room so we can move on with the rest of our agenda, so that we can get the rest of the applicants into the chamber. Madam Chair, this, this does remind me that we do need to approve the minutes of the joint public hearing with the City Council. I believe we need to vote, do we need to have them vote on it, Kay, as an approval for the Planning Commission for the joint public hearing minutes?
I don't believe they normally do approve minutes.
Okay, so we'll just hand this off. Never mind. Thank you.
All right, we're going to give just a second for the applicants for the items on our agenda today that need to be heard to enter into the room, and then we will get started. on our agenda. And I'm going to ask our city clerk if she'll call the first item up, please.
The first item to be heard today is McNeil Properties, application for a conditionally used permit auto repair garage located at forty-nine oh one Cleveland Street in the Bayside District.
Great, thank you, and not, I don't think Mr. Nutter needs to know this, but I am going to remind everybody out there that we are on a time limit of three minutes, and so I ask that you would respect that and to silence your cellphones as well. Thank you. Mr. Nutter, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. For record, my name's RJ Nutter, I represent Caliber, or in this case, McNeil. And first of all, I did appreciate we were able to be here during the informal session this morning, and was privy to the discussion, but I would just set a couple of things up for you, just to let you know about this. Caliber is actually the largest auto repair facility in the country. They have several facilities here, all of them operating in pristine condition with no complaints whatsoever. So, the company itself, the use itself, I think you've already found to be consistent with the uses in the area, and would be consistent with the other uses in that area and not be disruptive. The property is currently zoned B two and I one without any conditions whatsoever. It has, sits on one point three five acres, it's about fifteen thousand square feet in size, and what Caliber is doing is making extensive improvements on the outside of the building, both to the facility itself, closing doors that are there today that don't look very attractive, adding outings, repainting the building, putting in additional landscaping, redoing the accessways, and putting in extensive screening of ornamental fences and features like that. All of those, together, the total cost of this project to them is a little over four million dollars. This is not a light investment by their part at all. And quite frankly, all of the conditions, twelve of the thirteen conditions are acceptable. And the nice part about the twelve conditions, by the way, which, none of which would apply in the event that this application didn't get approved, all those conditions are designed to two things: to improve the appearance of the site, to make sure it's properly maintained, to add a different accessway to the site that's consistent with what the city would like to see it, to improve the quality of the building, and to shield any vehicles that are there. Right now, if those conditions aren't there, the vehicles, any vehicles could be there could be, would not be shielded, it could be used for any B two or I one use without condition or pre-consents. The only condition is Condition thirteen with respect to, that this would be reviewed after ten years. The problem with that is you've got a four million dollar capital investment, you, that would not occur with, with a ten-year restriction. It would not be able to be monetized, if you will, during that time period. In addition to that, the terms of the, Caliber stay here, are going to extend well beyond the ten-year period. So with the ten-year limitation, Caliber could not make an investment of that nature and proceed with the project. That's why we've asked that you eliminate Condition Number Thirteen. We're perfectly acceptable to the twelve conditions that precede that one. And again, the whole purpose of those is to make sure this site is improved, and you have a better looking site than you do today. One other thing I'll add, just because I must be close to my time limit, is that if this building were, were left alone, and Caliber did not come in, you have the exact same building, but in worse condition, with no conditions whatsoever. So I would ask that, that should be something you'd want to pursue and proceed with, and in fact, allow to continue well beyond the time period. If the conditions change in the region, economics would make that change. No matter what condition you put on this, in fact, a condition like this makes it impossible to sell. No one's going to want to buy or invest in this property with a ten-year limit, but the use that you spent four million dollars for might go away in ten-year period. It just wouldn't happen. So it would actually hurt the value of the property if we were to agree to that condition. That's the problem we have with it. But we have no problem with all the conditions that you've recommended respecting the operation, use of the facility, and as you know, the other uses in that facility that are almost identical to this use have no such conditions. Phillips, Phillips, it used to be Phillips, if you forgive me, Charles Barker is right down the street, they've got their facilities, a number of facilities around it are auto repair facilities without conditions like that. So, we would like to proceed, we'd like your recommendation of approval. We would ask that you consider dropping thirteen, but otherwise, I'm here for any questions, Madam Chairman, that you might have. We have no additional speakers, but I do have the engineers here, if you like, and representatives from McNeil, if you have any questions. So, I hope I stayed within my time limit.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Nutter?
No.
None right now?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, with that, I'll just go ahead and close this to the Commissioners and open it up for discussion. Yes, David?
Well, I stated this this morning, and I'll, so for the purposes of the public hearing, I'll, I'll restate it. I do agree with the applicant's position. And there was a time when I, when I, when I didn't, and it has to do with the importance of trying to improve and redevelop strategic growth areas. That's what they are, they're strategic growth areas. Be that as it may, they don't all move at, at light speed. And what I have found over time, and this is, comes in part with a, with a conversation I'd had with one of our council members, is that the timeframe, this particular timeframe on the conditionally used permit is just not helpful in any way towards advancing the SGA cause. What is, is market dynamism and momentum, and that's far more powerful than a bureaucratic deadline. Within all of our SGAs, we have transitional uses, where we might hope by virtue of the particular SGA plan in the context of the overall comprehensive plan, that we see higher-end redevelopment, it's not going to occur in, in a New York minute, right? And so we have some temporary uses. This is, or transitional use is a better way to put it. This is a parcel that is, as I said this morning, it's across from a seven eleven that has gas pumps, which requires a conditionally used permit. It's next to a trailer park, and on that very street are a whole lot of the same, similar kinds of uses, which I didn't realize, the applicant's attorney noted, do not have the same kind of restriction. I don't think it hurts the SGA cause to have this use. We have it in lots of other places, transitional uses. I don't think a ten-year limit on the conditionally used permit serves any purpose, other than perhaps limiting the ability of this particular redevelopment. What will make this SGA grow, and it's already growing in various places, is the kind of dynamism and market momentum that we hope to see in lots of places. And we are seeing it in lots of places. We're seeing it in the Burton Station Corridor, we're seeing it, actually, curiously enough, at the, at the western end of this strategic growth area. That's how this stuff gets done. It does not get done with, with, you know, an arbitrary bureaucratic deadline, in my view. The, the particular conversation I had had with a council member once before, when he'd had this discussion, I said, now, I want these SGAs to, and want to stick to vision, have these things in occurs, to, to which he replied, well, who would, who would build anything if they had that restriction? And I just, as I said, I just don't think that's how that gets done. I, I, I accept what the applicant has said about this. As I said, I had a different position in the past, I just came to view it differently because I just don't think that's, you know, that's the workable way to do it. I do support the application. When the time comes, I will make a motion for approval with Condition Number Thirteen removed. Thank you, Dee.
All right, with that, we will, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Redman?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the application with the removal of, approval of the application with the removal of Condition Number Thirteen. Thank you.
I have a second.
I have a second from Mr. Graham. And we can call for the vote.
All right. I'll, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Alcarez?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
All right. By recorded vote of nine to zero, agenda item Number Two has been approved, with the Condition Number Thirteen removed.
Thank you. Go ahead with the next one, please.
Okay, next item, it's Thomas A. Brown, subdivision variance for Section four point four B of the subdivision regulations at Shell Road between four twelve Duck Run Court and fifty-one forty-five Shell Road. We have one speaker registered, Ms.
Good afternoon. I'm Thomas Brown. Can I have this put up on the projector, or can I pass it out? Is that acceptable?
I don't know if we're able to put it on a projector, but we can certainly pass it around. You'll just hand it to Mr. DeHaan here, and he'll make sure that we see it.
It's basically page five of the staff report, just with my notes of, you know, what I'm presenting, which, if you look at page five, the upper, the upper lots they show are the existing lots, and the lower are the, the proposed lots, which... show are the existing lots, and the lower are the proposed lots, which, which basically we're just, we're leaving the lots as they are, just only changing the line that divides them. So, the whole property remains the same, just changing the dividing line to make the lots look better. The existing lots have three non-conforming issues, but with our change, we've eliminated two of the non-conforming issues, that you only have one, one non-conforming issue on the remaining ones. And you eliminate, you're making the lots look a lot better. With the house configuration, looks a lot better. You, you basically are eliminating that flag lot where it looks like one house is actually almost like in the backyard of another house. So, all in all, I think, it just makes, it makes it look better from pretty much everybody's perspective. It would look better. The civic league opposes it, and I understand their opposition, that they don't want to create a precedent that they are allowing lots of less than 40,000 square feet, because a lot of builders come into that neighborhood and want to take a larger lot and then divide it and end up with something less than 40,000. But our two existing lots already are less than 40,000. So, I don't think even allowing this, I don't think you're creating any precedent that's going to hurt the civic league in the future, because we're eliminating two non-conforming issues, and the one that remains is the one that was there to begin with, that you are less than 40,000 on, with the one that remains and the previous ones. So, I ask, you know, I think it's a good project, you know, from everybody's perspective, really. I think it's going to be better for the city because it's going to look better. Anything that looks better is better for the city. And I actually think if the civic league looks at it, it actually is going to look better, but they just don't want a bad precedent that I don't, I don't think it creates the precedent that they're worried about. That's, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We call Paul Calhoun. Mr. Calhoun, when you approach the podium, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Honorable members of the Planning Commission, I'm going to take this off. That's okay. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak. I'm Paul Calhoun. I'm President of Lakeview Park Civic League. This variance, as Mr. Brown said, and I agree with him, is unique to any other variances that normally the Lakeview Park Civic League argue against. Both the lots are under the 40,000 square foot. They were grandfathered in probably, I want to say around 1963, something like that. Like I said, both of them, and one of the lots doesn't have the required street frontage for R40. So, both the lots are non-conforming. I had a really nice conversation with Mr. Brown yesterday and talked to him, reviewed the plat, and looked at it, and actually, you know, I, in all aspects, I agree with what he's doing. It makes both the lots more appealing, more attractive, and both of them will have waterfront, you know, access. They'll be waterfront properties. Our only concern is that, you know, both the parcels are around 32,000 square feet, and so it would be under the 40,000 minimum, you know, for our 40 lot. So, in our case, it's, you know, it sets kind of a precedent, and it's just a concern for the neighbors and the, you know, the residents of Lakeview Park. We did, I did kind of put out a query for a survey for the residents, and I think you all have it on file. There was a petition that went out, and 35 people, out of the emails that we had, that we sent out, 35 were against it and five were for it. And, you know, and basically, it's just a, our concern is that this potentially could set up a precedent. I know there's, but there's a lot of caveats to these parcels, since none of them are compliant. And the applicant is definitely making the lots more attractive to anybody. So, basically, we just want to be on the record saying that the residents, you know, we purchased the property because we liked the R40 zoning. Lakeview Park is like one of the best, and I'm sure all of you all have been out there and taken a look at it, and it's like one of the best-kept secrets in Virginia Beach. You know, you're five minutes away from everything, but then you're almost in like, you know, a farmland. And for over 45 years, the city has maintained the integrity of our R40 zoning. It's actually mentioned in past comprehensive plans. You know, although I totally understand the reasoning behind the applicant's proposed variance, we just request, you know, we're just concerned about any type of precedent that may be set going forward, because like Mr. Brown said, occasionally, we'll get a developer come in there and they'll see it as an opportunity to subdivide, you know, the parcels, you know, a single parcel into postage stamp-sized parcels. And so, you know, we want to maintain the type of land that we, you know, purchased and lived on. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Redden?
Mr. Calhoun, there are a number of lots in Lakeview Park that are not 40,000 square feet. Is that true?
That is correct, but they were grandfathered in. Prior to most of them, there has not been a subdivision on a parcel in 40 years where the, the other parcels where it was subdivided was not 40,000 square feet. Some of them were grandfathered in, you know, way back in the 60s, and the surrounding areas in the 50s where they were created. But really, I want to say 45 years, that there hasn't been a single parcel that has been subdivided less than 40,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, did you want to add anything? Can you rebut anything?
The only thing I could say is, you know, we're not creating a lot. I can see it's concerned that they don't want to have any lots created under 40,000, but we're not really creating any, and we're just making a minor, you know, adjustment to these that are already under 40,000 to make them look better. And I actually, you know, I think a lot of people that are opposed maybe been, because their opposition just came, came in the last couple of days. If I would have knew about it, I would have gotten, you know, maybe went to a civic league meeting or something. But I think a lot of people that are opposed, if it was really shown to them like what I have there, I think they might not be that opposed, because I think even Mr. Calhoun agreed it makes, makes the lots look better. So, I guess my main point is, we're not creating a lot that we need a variance on. And really, we're not changing the non-conformity. It's just because we are changing it a little bit. Just technically, you have to come back for a variance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Guess we'll close that and open it up for a discussion or a motion. Mr. Redmond?
There are, in fact, a number of lots in Lakeview Park that are not 40,000 square feet. This is not, you know, a unicorn. And it is true that the configuration of the lots not only look better, but they simply work better. I mean, I think it's, you know, it should not take a lot of, you know, deep thought to understand that more regularly-shaped lots of a more uniform size are simply a better land use pattern than what we have here. I live not far from here. My lot is 26,000 square feet. I can't keep up. These are big lots. By any stretch of the imagination, this is a large lot. It's, you know, three-quarters of an acre, more than that. An acre is 43,560. These are, these are large lots. I don't see what the harm is in reconfiguring these in such a way that they just work better, and it's a better land use pattern. There are folks who are opposed to things sometimes, I think, for reasons which are too rigid, and this may be one of them. But I do think this is a sensible, justifiable change that's for the better, and I will support it. If anybody has any other comments, I want to let them speak, and then I'll be happy to make a motion. George wants to say something over there, Dave.
Mr. Redmond, I concur. Just one thing that I'm pretty familiar with is this is not a subdivision. It's a resubdivision, relocating property lines. And if you weigh the two non-conformities out for each lot, you know, one has one non-conformity, one has two, now they only have one each, so it's a better situation. So, I concur, and I agree. I'd support it, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Wall?
I appreciate the Civic League and their efforts to maintain the integrity of the lot size in the neighborhood, but in this case, it seems like it is a betterment, and it doesn't seem like it would be a detriment to the neighborhood to, to align the lot lines, you know, the way that they're shown. So, I mean, I support it also.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Agenda Item Number Four.
Second. Mr. Redmond has made a motion, and Mr. Alcaraz has made a second. I'm second. We're ready for vote.
I will call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Enman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
By a recorded vote of eight to zero, Agenda Item Number Four has been approved.
Thank you. On the next one?
We'll move on to Item Number Five. Louis Perrin, a conditional use permit for a residential kennel located at 2121 Mundon Point Road. I have a number of speakers on this. Mr. Weiner.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Board.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Louis Perrin. I reside at 2121 Mundon Point, Virginia Beach. And I applied for a residential application. My address is 13 acres and it's zoned AG2. I currently had, I had a kennel back in Massachusetts, and when I moved to Virginia, I wanted to focus more on my dogs. I show dogs all over the country, so I wanted to apply for residential kennel, because you're by law states, if you have more than four dogs, you require a residential kennel license. I did submit to the, when I was filling out my application, letters of recommendation from the town that I lived in, also from the dog officer state. I never had any issues, any complaints, and also from my neighbors. I did apply for a permit to build a indoor kennel that's going to be heated and AC. Also, I'll have cameras inside, and those dimensions were 27 by 30. Other than that, I don't, unless the Board's got questions for me.
Okay, please stand by. We listened to some of the speakers talk, and then you'll have a chance to come back up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Toreg Luca. And as you approach the podium, if you could state your name for the record, please. Okay, moving on to the next one. Samantha Guide.
Hello. I'm going to pull this down so I can speak. So, yes, my name is Samantha Guida, and I do live directly across the street from Mr. Perrin. My address is 2120 Mundon Point Road. My boyfriend and I are in favor of the dog kennel for the following reasons. We have personally met the four dogs that Mr. Perrin has. We, when we approach them, they're not aggressive. They do not bark at us. They're actually very sweet and gentle. We do have a rescue dog that is only a year old, who's only 39 pounds, so she is small in stature. She has played with his dogs. None of them have been aggressive towards her, mean, biting, nipping, none of that. Very sweet and playful with them. I personally have fed his dogs, had my hands in their mouths. None of them have been food aggressive. None of them have charged at me, nothing of that sort. They're actually very sweet. And then, we've been in their home before. Never once have we heard them bark. The garage that they are staying in currently is soundproofed and does have AC and heat. They're well-kept, well-mannered. Never seen them out running loose or anything like that. As a matter of fact, we're actually in awe of Mr. Perrin, because his dogs are so well-mannered that they listen to him, they obey him. My dog, for instance, doesn't listen. She runs rampant and just doesn't behave, unfortunately. But again, we just are in awe because his animals are so well-kept and just the sweetest dogs personally. And again, we don't ever hear them bark. We don't see them running around or anything of that nature. And we just, we think it's actually a breath of fresh air to have new neighbors who are very nice. Their children are great. And again, their dogs, and they're just well-behaved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name's Clement Chernak. I live at 2100 Mundon Point Road, pretty much directly across from Mr. Perrin's house. Been there for 13 years. You know, we have different types of neighbors. Some come over to you and discuss things, tell you what their plans are, et cetera. Others, you know, might call the city to see if you'll cut down trees so they can have a better view. At any rate, bottom line is, is that Mr. Perrin came up, introduced himself to me, talked to me about his plans, et cetera. I have a little bit of background in sound, et cetera, and all that, so I actually helped him with some things, took some sound pressure level readings, et cetera. I used to do home theater installation. Sounds to me like the soundproofing ideas for his kennel look quite sound. Should reduce any output by about 30 decibels. I have never, in walking my dog up and down the street, experienced any barking from his dog, unlike many other dogs in the neighborhood. So, I'm not concerned about that in the slightest. I actually had him make the dogs bark out in the yard, and the sound levels were considerably less than a lawnmower running or the jets passing overhead. They were basically about the level of a normal conversation. I believe coming in around 62 decibels, somewhere around there. So, I'm pretty satisfied with that. Having observed his yard for quite some time, because we get flooding, and frankly, I kind of use his yard as a gauge as to whether I can get past West Neck Road or what have you, in terms of if I have to go out and get something. Where he plans on putting the kennel, there is no flooding. So, that is the least of my concerns there as far as ground contamination or any of that. His construction plans seem good, and I welcome the fact that he took his time to come out, introduce himself, tell me what he was doing before he did it. This is the type of neighbor I like. Ones that work with you. And that's all I have to say. And I have met the dogs. The dogs are fine. They're, I've done animal rescue. I worked on dolphin rescues, dog rescues, fostering kittens, fostering other dogs. His dogs are confident. They're calm. It's, they're not like our family pets where we tend to spoil them. It's a different level of training, and I have absolutely no issue with what he plans on doing.
Thank you for your comments.
Hope to learn from him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maria Perrin?
Maria Perrin? Please state your name for the record.
Hi there. My name is Maria Perrin. I am a retired warrant officer from the Army. I've been married to my husband for 22 years. I was not raised around dogs. I actually had a pretty big fear of dogs as a kid. My parents kind of embedded that in me. My husband has begged me to have dogs for a long time. I finally did. I am now a pre-vet student at Becker College. One of the things that really turned me on to wanting to be around dogs is not only my husband's, but my friends' passion for animals and the love that they had for pets. I suffer from PTSD, and one thing that I've learned besides going to college is how therapeutic animals can be. The passion that my husband has shown with his rottweilers has really brought a whole new meaning for animals and myself. I have bonded with the rottweilers that he has. I've seen his passion, and we gave up a lot to move to Virginia. We had a lot of property, but due to some medical issues, we decided to sell everything, and I came along with him to pursue his dream to raise dogs, show dogs, and do something that makes him feel better. And I just want to say that what I've seen with my husband and with the dogs that we have, and going to college to pursue a veterinarian degree, I have a whole different view on dogs, and I love the dogs that we do have, and my husband is very passionate and very good with his dogs. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Kyle Bosilovak. Good try. So I live at 5909 Hattie Street, which is on the corner of Hattie and Mundon Point. I lived there for about 10 years now, and I just wanted to come and show my favoritism for Mr. Perrin here. I only just met him a couple days ago. I became aware of the situation that was going on. That's kind of at the other end of Mundon Point, so two different worlds, I guess. I don't know. But wasn't really sure what was going on down there, but he was happy to invite me to his home and kind of explain what was going on and what his plan was and the situation. And so I was able to meet three of the dogs while I was down there. They were all super happy, friendly, playful. I didn't see any aggression whatsoever at that point. He also was in control of them the entire time. He wasn't letting them out, run around, or anything like that on his property. He showed me where he was planning on putting the kennel, behind some trees, well off the road, with his plan to heat and AC it. It's going to be insulated. I don't see any issue with sound or anything like that. I actually had no idea that he even owned dogs up until that point. I've walked my own dog past this house several times since they've moved in. I had no idea he even had dogs. So as far as the barking currently, it was nonexistent. The only time I heard them barking was when he went in there to get another dog and come back out, and even then, I was standing right outside the garage. So I guess I'm just here to say that I don't see any issue with what he's doing. He seems like a very agreeable person. He's interested in trying to make the other people around him comfortable with what he's doing. So, you know, he's offered to make amenities and things like that, so I'm all in favor for it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no additional speakers for this item. Thank you. Does Mr. Perrin, would you like to come back up?
One of the last things I want to talk about with my dogs is, you know, we talk about the word rottweiler, and people automatically have fear. One of the things we do with show dogs is from the minute they're born, we're running our hands through their mouth. We're teaching them not to protect food. We're teaching them not to have food aggression, and we're teaching them that we're the alphas. And the reason we do that is because when we're in the show ring, I have to have my dogs open their mouth and have a judge count all their teeth and make sure they have the correct scissor bite and pigmentation within their mouth. The reason I tell you that is because some people may have fear of the unknown because they don't know a rottweiler. But we don't breed dogs that have bad temperaments. I have a dog that has done protection work. That dog's temperament is fantastic. In Germany, they will not allow any dogs with bad temperaments to be bred. They have to be of the highest standard to be bred and shown, not just temperaments, but also health. That's all I really have for the Board. I know it's not an easy decision. I was on the planning board in Massachusetts that I had to resign from, and honestly, it was very rewarding. So regardless of the decision, I know it's not always an easy decision, unless the Board's got questions for me. And honestly, I'm extremely nervous on this side. I'm always on the other side, so I'm not nervous, but this side is pretty intimidating.
I appreciate that. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Weiner.
How long have you been doing this in Punga, where you're living now?
I just moved here, sir, August 21st.
Okay. So what do you have there built now for the dogs?
I have nothing. I have my dogs. I run them in and out. I'm semi-retired. I had a ton of real estate back in Massachusetts, and I was a builder. But for uncertain reasons, I had to sell everything and move more south. Being a true New Englander, I couldn't really move deep south because I couldn't deal with the heat, so I thought Virginia would be a happy medium for me. Right now, they're in my garage with us because we're painting the house, and I don't want to get black fur on the paint. But I rotate them in and out of the house constantly. But when we do that, it's, we're instilling training. People are like, how much, how do you train your, how many times a day you train your dog? Every second is training. I'm out the door first, they're second. They eat when I tell them to eat. They look at me when they're walking, they're listening. At the end of the day, I love them like my children, but at the end of the day, they're still dogs.
Well, just real quick, I'm going to make, this is not a question, this is a note. I know what you're saying about rottweilers, and people hear rottweiler, they're thinking big, mean dog. I have a pit bull, and she's the biggest wimp I know, the biggest wimp dog. But doorbell rings, she runs out back. So I know what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don?
You say you've got 13 acres, but a big portion of that is swamped and marshaled, is that right?
There is a little bit of water, sir. I really haven't really had to figure out how to use your systems yet. Back home, we would use Oliver GIS, and I could actually measure the land. I've tried that on your sites. I really haven't figured out your sites yet, but I would have to say seven acres, seven and a half acres is land, and the rest is water.
Okay, the, have you ever had any, I know we've had some letters, you know, other letters that people didn't show up today for some odd reason, but where your dogs had been on their other people's property? How did that happen?
So what happened, when we originally got there, I had some outdoor kennels where I feed them, and then I'll let them go to the bathroom so I can pick it up. Your dirt's different here. I didn't realize when it gets wet and that clay, it's very clayish. I tried to open the dog, the dog door, the dog got out. Since then, I moved my kennels on a concrete plaid in the, concrete base in the driveway until I built my kennel. The dog did get out. I did get the dog. But also, for the record, the dog was surrounded by chickens, and nothing happened.
Enough said, I guess. Anyway, do you, do you ever anticipate, I mean, you're going to have your property fenced in so the dogs, when they are loose, they cannot get out?
Yes, sir. So currently, I've had nothing but bad luck since I moved to Virginia. From day one, the dishwasher died to everything else.
It is 2020.
I'm hoping this, next year will be better, but when they were repairing the dock, the truck driver had the mofet on the back of the truck and knocked down the pillars at the end of the driveway where I planned on putting a gate to keep the dogs in. But just for the record, some of these dogs are worth anywheres from $20,000 to $40,000. I don't have any intentions on letting them run free. They're usually on leash with me. That was a one-time incident. I'm embarrassed about the incident because that's not how I am with my dogs, but it was, I had only been there like two weeks. New smells, new area, new everything. It happened. I never had that incident in Massachusetts. I think I submitted a letter from the dog officer back home praising me for the way I keep my kennel and how I take care of my dogs.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Klein?
Thank you. Can you speak to where some of the contention is coming from with some of the other neighbors who are less than thrilled about the kennel?
So my one neighbor, we actually stopped, he pulled over to talk to me, which was a relief. For the longest time, I felt like I was living on eggshells, didn't feel welcome to the neighborhood, thinking here I am, I just spent one point, $1 million on a house, and I'm afraid to go outside with my dogs because I'm afraid of what people are going to think. So he did eventually pull over. We went for a walk, and we talked, and his concern was his biggest fear of anxiety and not knowing the dogs. He currently lives beside me. There's a six-foot wooden fence. It's almost impossible for a dog to get over there, but I, my concern is, I'm the new guy on the street. I have nothing but respect for my neighbors. That's why I reached out to everybody. Before we even bought the house, I drove down here three times from Massachusetts to meet my neighbors. So I want to do, I want to live my dream, but I also want people to live in peace. So I'm willing to do whatever I have to do to make my neighbors happy because I don't want to hear dogs barking either. But I will do whatever I need to do to make them happy. But I think the biggest thing was fear, the word rottweiler. And then me and him went for a walk with one of my dogs, and he felt extremely more comfortable. I asked him if he wanted to put his hand in the mouth, his hand in the dog's mouth, but he said he hadn't gotten to that level yet. But I wanted to show him that dogs react off people's behavior, too. If you show fear, they're more standoffish. But my dogs are very confident. They go to Home Depot with me. They go to the pet stores. Last year before COVID, I was in Ohio, and a 330 dog, there was 330 rottweilers there. There were no issues. In the show ring, your dog cannot show any aggression, or they throw you out. In the dog world business, we're some, we can be crazy people. We take dog shows very serious. So for us, winning is everything, and for something like that to happen is very embarrassing. So we, I train my dogs a lot to react to people, strange people, strange locations, different situations.
So to this point, have there been any incidents with your dogs other than them just escaping from the yard?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wall?
So you currently have four dogs. Is that?
I currently own, I have four dogs, but in total, I have nine dogs.
You have nine dogs. Okay, because your pen, the sketch of the pen is, it has eight, eight pens within the building.
That's correct. The rest of my dogs stay in my house. I have a son that has a French Bulldog. Believe it or not, he rules the rottweilers. And then I have a daughter that has severe anxiety, who wants to get a toy poodle to help her, but that's kind of been on hold because I'm already exceeding the town bylaw. So I really can't move forward and do anything until I figure out where I stand with the city as far as the kennel.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious about the perimeter fence or a fence. Is there, because you mentioned, you know, there's, you don't have a gate, but is there a fence?
So on the, so North Carolina's to the south. So to the north, there's a stone wall that goes around the front of my house, but there's a pillar that was knocked down. I'm waiting for it to get fixed so I can put up a steel gate. Then to the right of that, the, there is a six-foot wooden fence that goes around my property. And then there is the, I don't know what you guys call it, it's the vinyl fence that you see at the horse farms. They have that, but it also has metal wiring in front of it. So all of my property is basically fenced in other than where the gate is, and then there's a little piece that meets down by the water that's not fenced in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
So at this time, we'll close the hearing and open it up to the commissioners.
You know, I've received a couple calls on this, and the first thing, you know, residential kennels, we've approved residential kennels in the residential areas, in ag areas for, you know, forever. And there's a lot of, hunt clubs have dogs, and they have to get licensed, so they have to have residential kennels. So it really didn't dawn on me much about, didn't really didn't think a whole lot about it until somebody said rottweilers. And I guess I'm like he said, when you hear rottweiler, you know, you know, you can open your eyes a little bit further and see what's what. And then as I got to talking to some of the people as they call, some of them were concerned, and some of them's concerns had been addressed. And the more I think about it, is if you've got somebody that's got four dogs, and he doesn't have to have any conditions to be there, whether they're rottweilers or German shepherds or whatever, you know, I think you're probably better off if you allow the kennel license where, you know, they're going, you know, you know what facilities is going to be there and how they'll be taken care of and whatever. So I guess I've kind of waffled my opinion of this to lean in favor of it because of that. I think it, I think the gentleman has shown that he is very concerned about what he's doing. I know people in show business, whether it's dogs or whatever, you know, whatever animal, there's a lot of, a lot of people that love showing animals, and they're very concerned, and they'll go beyond their expectation that you think they would to make sure the animals are cared for right and have the right facilities. So with that being said, I will, I'll let you know that I'm going to be in support of the application. And I thought maybe I'd see if there was any other more stipulations we could put there that would make it any more secure, but I think they, I've looked over the conditions and all, they're pretty secure. And listening to what the gentleman has said about how he's going to secure his property and the building he's going to build, that I will be in favor of the motion. So whenever people are finished, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Don. Yes, Robin?
I pulled up the house on Zillow. It's beautiful, by the way. It looks like the horse fencing that he's discussing is the, is only about yay high, so it can be jumped over by a dog. I would feel more comfortable if there was more concrete fencing, but I do intend to vote in favor of the property.
Okay. Mr. Perrin, do you mind stepping up, please? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So can you speak to the fence that Commissioner Klein's referring to?
I think the fence is about this high. I tried to go over it.
But it's open, right?
It is. So what they do is they, they take that, like chicken wire fence, I don't know if that's the correct term. It's the wire fence. It's a heavier gauge, and what they do is they go over the front of the fence with it.
Okay.
You can't see it, so a dog can't go through it. That's basically on half the property right now.
Okay.
Because my other neighbor has goats and chickens, and so they don't go through there. My dogs don't go through that. The other half, that's what I planned on doing. I just didn't want to really do anything until I knew where I stood with the Board. But I don't have a problem with ensuring my neighbor's safety and concerns.
So it's a slotted fence, but there's chicken wire, so the dogs can't run through it?
Yes, ma'am. It's like a heavy gauge. You really can't see it. I didn't even realize it until I got close to it.
Okay.
And I think the holes are maybe two by three inches.
No, I know what you're talking about. Yeah. That makes sense.
But I have no problem with doing that, securing it.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? With a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion if we approve the application with the conditions as stated.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Redmond. We'll call for the question, please. I will call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Edman?
I abstain as I was out of the room when the discussion was held.
And we have Mr. Barnes absent, Mr. Costin absent. Seven to zero, our reported vote of seven to zero, agenda item number five has been approved.
All right.
Oh, sorry. Eight with one abstention.
Yeah, eight. It's a eight, four, zero against and one abstention.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and call the next when you all are ready.
Item number 10, Andrew Gregory, a conditional use permit, short-term rental for 514 Pinewood Drive.
Madam Chair. I just need to disclose that I own the property adjacent to this applicant. It's a rental. It's, and it's not a short-term rental. It's a long-term, and I will be voting on this.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Andrew Gregory. I own the property at 514 Pinewood Drive. Madam Chair and the board, I want to thank you first and foremost for the Planet Commission and their staff and the massive effort that you've put forth to arrange this permitting process and today's hearing. Due to the pandemic, all of us here in Virginia Beach have experienced hardship in many types and forms. And this council's hearings and permitting process have not gone unscathed. In my particular case, this permitting process has stretched from three months to presently over 10 months. Despite the frustrations, hurdles and hiccups, the Planet Commission staff has been outstanding and I wish to take this opportunity to thank them for their professionalism. I consider being a homeowner in this neighborhood a true privilege. I am committed to meeting and maintaining the requirements of Section 241.2 regarding conditional use permits for short-term rentals as well as meeting my fiscal responsibilities in the form of STR-related occupancy and room taxes and can agree to comply with all 18 conditions per the report. I wish to state for the record my agreement with the Planet Commission and the City Council's spirit and intent of regulating this industry. Love them or hate them, short-term rentals are here to stay and have been an integral part of this community and the Virginia Beach tourism industry. They provide hundreds of thousands in revenue for the city every year and have existed in our beachfront communities since even before the incorporation of this city. I commend the City Council in enacting Section 241.2 and look forward to addressing any questions or concerns you may have and working with you to achieve a conditional use permit that is beneficial of and considerate of all parties involved. At this time, I have no further comments and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I just want to address one thing on, on our summary.
Yes, ma'am.
That it said that you disagreed with the City Council's recommendation conditions reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculations to two per bedroom.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
That is correct. That I disagree with those conditions on my own personal basis. However, if those are the conditions that are required by the board today in order to secure this conditional permit and secure your recommendations, I will personally agree with them, but on a larger issue, I would disagree with them. If you'd like, I can comment further on those, but I believe there's two issues here in my agreement with the requirement as a whole for the regular community versus my individual goals to achieve working with y'all to get a conditional use permit.
Understood. But you do understand that to disagree with them means you don't accept them. And so going forward, it is either.
Ma'am, if I may, for example, we may disagree with the speed limit posted on the street, but we still comply to it, right? So what I'm saying is I don't necessarily agree with those conditions in my personal opinion, but I would wholeheartedly comply with the conditions that the board is asking of me.
I understand that, but in this case, it's semi-black and white. You either agree to the conditions or you disagree with the conditions.
I apologize, ma'am. I think we're, I think we're debating over semantics here. I'm agreeing to comply with the conditions. I, I don't agree with them in my own personal opinion, but I will agree to comply with them for the board. And if you'd like, I'd add further comments on that.
That's all. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I just need to clarify. My property's down the street, about four houses. It's not directly adjacent.
Great. Thank you, George. With that, we'll go ahead and close this and.
I have some speakers to call, Madam Chair.
Well, there you go. Thank you. We'll keep this open then.
David Haddaway? Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name's David Haddaway. I live with my wife at 528 Pinewood Drive, about a couple of doors down from 514. And in all fairness too, just like we're talking about owning a little bit down the street, this is also my son-in-law. My daughter bought that house as a vacation home. It's great to have your grandkids a couple of doors down, but while they're out of town, you know, it'd be nice to be able to have some rental income. So that's all part of that. But I'm actually talking about the characteristics of the neighborhood and help, help, help the commission understand the characteristics. Because I saw one, one of y'all's workshops on your PowerPoint said, whatever you do about these CZO and how this stuff is, consider the characteristics of the neighborhood. How is this going to affect? Is it going to negatively impact? Is it going to maintain the characters? And we've had long-term and short-term rentals on this block of Pinewood Drive, the lower half of it, between Mediterranean and Midway. In the 10 years that we've been here, we've had at least seven properties registered or active or rented in long-term or short-term capacities. What's interesting is we're probably about at the lowest point that we have been in 10 years with two active LTR, long-term rentals, and this one proposed, excuse me, proposed short-term rental. And so it's still, and within the characteristics that we've seen over the 10 years, and it's been a relatively quiet neighborhood. So that, that's really cool about that part. But the other part about the characteristics and some of those other negative impacts people talk about are parking and traffic and trash and all that good stuff, which is the same thing my friends and family from other cities say, don't you have those problems down there at the oceanfront? Don't you have too much traffic and too much parking issues and problems and people and noise and parties? I'm sure y'all hear those things and whatnot. We don't really hear that on Pinewood Drive and we haven't. And when we do, and I tell my neighbors, I say, when we do, it's us local residents. We have a gathering at our house specifically. We'll have 10, 15 cars there for Thanksgiving. Across the street, they'll have their choreography and dance club, 10, 15 cars, people visiting there. Across the street diagonally from us, they'll have a big old barbecue in the backyard and we'll hear music late into the night. But that's residents hearing music. It's not the, the long-term or the short-term that have ever been a problem. And in traffic and trash, again, I'm sorry, but it's us local residents, you know, as we do the, we see revitalization. It's usually a contractor or us doing renovations, putting out stuff for bulk pickup and our waste management teams. I know they do a great job, but when there's storm debris, that comes first. Our, our drywall or whatever stuff we've been tearing out ourselves and trying to do, that comes later. So, you know, but those kinds of things happen, but it's been us. The disturbances on the street, minor in 10 years, so we, we actually create more noise than our renters. And even a little bit further down the street, I think we heard like that, you don't hear from the renters. They're, they're pretty darn quiet on our, on our street. So think about the characteristics. I saw that in your workshop. I was like, I'm glad y'all are thinking about the neighborhoods.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
So thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Next speaker will be Bruce Dubois. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name's Bruce Dubois. I'm a retired military officer. Live across the street from 514 Pinewood Drive, at 517 Pinewood Drive. I'm currently in the process of tearing my home down and rebuilding. And I know, so I know there's a process to do that and I like to follow processes. I think this, it's nothing you can do about it, but these short-term rentals, I just feel are getting out of hand when it comes to residential properties. We're a, we're, we're an R5S, which is once again, single-family residential. It's turning into commercial. We're getting more and more weekly rentals coming into the neighborhood. And with weekly, weekly rentals, you don't know who's coming in. You don't know who these people are. They're here for a week to have a good time. They're on vacation. The previous owner of this property did the same thing. And, and there were issues. There was noise. I think there was one time, there's probably about eight cars parked out front and they were about to get in a fight with each other. It's just, you just don't know who's going to be there for the week. Some of the other issues, I guess, code enforcement. I can't get parking enforcement to come down the street and enforce, enforce parking on the street. I don't know how they're going to enforce short-term rental codes. It sounds like a good idea, but it's, it's just, it doesn't work. They're just not enforcing anything. I guess we have to call the police to come over and break it up, but that doesn't help anything because the codes still aren't being enforced. It's just fixing the problem in short-term. The house has been rented out all summer long on a weekly basis before this process is even complete. I had, I had an issue with that. The house does, the house doesn't comply to, to city code. It's got a, a bathroom on the side of the house that was never permitted properly and encroaches on the side of the house. I mean, I, I say that because I'm, I'm having to abide by city code. I expect everybody else to have to abide by city code when I'm building my new home. It looks like an industrial all the way around, concrete everywhere, parking lot in the front. He's, he's been forced to put a fence up to, I guess, satisfy the city for parking at the house and it just doesn't even look good. So once again, being a neighbor living right across the street, I, I'm just, it's not, I'm just not in favor of short-term rentals in, in general. So that's, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Daniel Nevu? Please state your name for the record.
I saw Daniel Nevu. Nevu, however you want to say it. My parents gave me that name, so it's what I got. So I want to say good afternoon to ladies and gentlemen of the, of the Planet Commission. And I want to thank y'all for the service you do for the city of Virginia Beach. I know it's, it's, it's a tough job to do and it's even tougher with this pandemic. And I hope everybody's healthy here today, families as well. I have been living at 515 Pinewood Drive now since 1994. We purchased, or we rented for three years. We decided we were going to buy it. We bought it in 95-ish. In 99, we decided we were going to build our dream home. So we, we were going to tear it down, but we realized we needed a variance. So before we moved forward with all that, we went to the neighbors, got the variance and we were approved for the variance, went through the whole process. Fast forward, we've seen the neighborhood come and grow. I mean, a lot of houses have changed. There's a lot of development going on down there. My wife used to be in part of the civic league. We're kind of in a limbo kind of place where a little bit of the history of the, the neighborhood, Pinewood used to let out by the 711 at Pacific where the 711 is. And then they closed the road down and that was a wonderful thing because it cut down on the through traffic from Atlantic and Pacific, cutting down our street, cutting out to Mediterranean. So that was a wonderful thing. It essentially made the neighborhood a little bit of a gated community because the only way in and out is Pinewood or Lake. And in the flux of all that, the, our civic league thing was kind of a, we were like the redheaded stepchild, so to speak. We weren't part of Shadow Lawn. We weren't part of Old Beach. At one point, we had our own civic league. And so we used to try to monitor these things and issues as they come up. And for whatever reason, that kind of fell by the wayside. So I don't even know where our civic leagues are on this whole issue of the short-term lease. And that's all well and good because in my mind, that's, 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 that boat has already sailed to some degree. But I do appreciate the way y'all have it set up where each applicant and variance is its own unique individual case. In my instance, I live directly across the street from the applicant's dwelling. Before they bought it, the person that was there had a short-term rental and I wasn't happy about the idea of them doing it. But I don't want to tell somebody to do what they can do with their property. But I was, I was a witness to how that went on and the comings and the goings, the late hours of people and all that. I didn't like it. Didn't enjoy it. There were late hours at night, gatherings into the street. And I think it's two different people. You got people who are homeowners, who are in it for their, they're, they're building a home, their dream, and that's where they want to be. That's where they want a community. They want neighbors. Whether you know the neighbors personally or whether you see them and you give them this on the side of the street. You know who they are. They have a schedule. You know their comings and goings.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
So personally, I.
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time is up. But I would like to, just a quick question.
Yes.
Are you for or are you opposing?
I am opposing.
Okay, that's, thank you very much.
From the history of what I've seen from living across the street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is all the speakers for this item.
Great, thank you. Do we have any, yes, Graham?
I was just going to, is this a concrete front yard?
It does appear to be.
And has the applicant been doing short-term rentals this summer?
We can ask him back up. Sir, would you please come back up? If you'll state your name again for the record, please.
Yes, no problem, ma'am. Andrew Gregory. Sorry, what was the question?
Have you done any rentals, weekly rentals this past summer?
In the interest of honesty and full disclosure, yes, I have done a handful of rentals this summer, but this needs a full story. And you can talk to your staff if you'd like. My original hearing date was May 13th. And as mentioned earlier in my opening statements, I began this process back in 2019. Hence, I'm not the kind of person to woe ways of the pandemic and blame it. But this is a distinct example where things got delayed. I canceled as many as I could fiscally, within fiscal reason, as I could without taking a huge fiscal burden on myself as well as considering that I had actually thought of this, that this process may go long, that it may be extended into the summer and I may not be able to guarantee that income. Therefore, when I purchased the house in the fall of 2019, I set aside six months of reserve funds to support myself and my family as a vacation home as it would be. I had no way to plan for 18 months of needing reserve funds and I think any small business owner would attest to that. So it was a balance of canceling what I could and accepting what rentals I could to manage my finances to get through the next season and get through this hearing process.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
You used a word that, that's interesting, you, small business.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you not, you don't reside in this house, I take it?
No, as mentioned, it was purchased as a vacation property to visit the in-laws.
Okay.
And my mortgage says as such, I paid a large down payment to purchase this.
Okay, so it is a business?
I, it is a location of a business as your own records will attest. I have my business, business account through the city. I have it written here, business account number, I apologize if I'm not right.
No, that's fine.
Eight thousand and some. I believe by the city standards, I need to call it a business in order to collect the appropriate taxes and pay the appropriate taxes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We have any other questions for the applicant? Oh, sure. Can you speak to the front yard or the?
Yeah, I mean, you can see it in the pictures. It is a large concrete pad. That was there when I purchased the home and it's been there for many years. It's how it is. If you were able to zoom out and look on Zillow, many of the properties around there have similar functions. And actually, I have a smaller apron, maybe 12 or 16 feet. Most of the properties up and down the street utilize a maximum 24-foot apron. So in terms of encroachment on easement, I'm actually less than most of the neighbors in what's standard around me. In terms of compliance and appearance and my mentioning of this process, I didn't want to labor anyone with details. I've worked diligently with Bill Lanfair and Kevin Hirschberger to actually return 250 square feet of property on the back of the house that the previous owner had taken from the city. I tore up 250 square feet of concrete as well as a 20 by 20-foot shed that I had to tear down as well as a fence that had to be moved in approximately 15 feet in order to bring the house up to code. As you can see there in the previous survey from the previous owner. I'd also like to take the moment, a little diversion here, but to address the comments of the two individuals referencing the previous owner, there was a previous owner. It's not me. It's not your main to this issue. I will run and can attest to running a high-end property. I have invested tens of thousands of dollars in this property in the betterment. If we had the ability to show pictures, you could. If we had the ability to show pictures, you could see the before and after, Zillow, of the interior, which has been fully renovated. Furniture, painting, fixtures, plumbing, multiple water issues that the previous owner had not addressed that I spent time and money addressing on this property to bring this property into the modern day and to make it a high-quality place for my family and other guests to stay at.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, we'll close the hearing and open it up to the commissioners. George? Or anyone?
I'd rather hear from the other commissioners, if any.
Nobody has anything to say. Go ahead, Mr. Weiner.
Having heard the opposition and considering the location of this property, even before hearing about the inappropriate use of it, before having a permit or having a conditional use permit, I don't see this as compatible with the neighborhood at all, and I would make a motion to deny it.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Mr. Edman, and I will as well be voting against it.
I vote, yes. Mr. Redmond?
I don't feel like it's compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant also was doing short-term rentals over the summer. And we heard from two homeowners on the street really speaking about the character of the neighborhood. I just don't feel like it's a compatible use.
Yeah, the only, go ahead.
I disagree respectively, and I'm gonna support it. I think one of the main reasons we actually were, I know some other people came in to talk neighbors, but one of the main reasons we were gonna hear this one because the applicant didn't agree with the conditions. Besides that, it might have been that nobody came in to speak, or it went right straight to consent. So, I'm gonna be supporting it.
All right, thanks. What I want to, I mean, he meets all the criteria. He meets all the, what's asked for. But one thing I weigh in is on the neighbors. The neighbors are very important. And having said that, I can't support it after hearing the opposition.
Yeah, my concern goes back to, along with the neighbors, but it was the disagreement with the with the conditions. And granted, he mentioned that he agreed with them, but he disagreed with them. I'm not quite sure exactly what that leads to at the end of the day. And so, with that, I'm just, I can't support this one. Yes, sir, Mr. Redmond?
I'm not sure you're being fair about that. I heard him very clearly to say he intended in every way to comply with the conditions. Saying he doesn't like them is one thing.
That's right.
There are lots of people who don't, there are lots of people-
Sir, I'm sorry.
There are lots of people who don't like the conditions. He made very clear he intended to comply with the, I mean, I think he's right. You're getting way too caught up in semantics about that. The reason I asked your question, I'm trying to get a handle on what constitutes incompatibility with a neighborhood. I mean, I can say that about every single application in every single neighborhood. I'm just trying to figure out what that means. I don't disagree with you. I'm just trying to get a handle on what the, everything in this thing is-
David, I'm sorry. I'm gonna interrupt you one more time. Sir, if you burst out one more time, I'm gonna ask you to leave the building.
Oh, I didn't hear stuff. I'm sorry. I thought you just wanted me to come up here.
No, sir. This is closed, and we are speaking amongst the commissioners. I would appreciate if you wouldn't do that again. Thank you.
So, I'm trying to get, what I'm trying to get at is something more objective. You know, I don't know how to, I mean, there's no checklist that's that what is or isn't. So, I'm just trying to understand what constitutes incompatibility. I don't necessarily disagree with you. I'm just trying to get a better handle on it.
My position has been if it's east of Baltic, correct or wrong, this is west of Baltic?
Yes.
Okay. That's where my position, since we talked about Old Beach. We have, if I'm not mistaken, denied an application. I know, but several weeks ago, we denied an application that was just over in Shadow Lawn that I thought was, you know, even more, you know, likely to be a short-term rental. But we denied that. We heard opposition from the neighbors. We felt like it was changing the character of the neighborhood. I feel like this changes the character of the neighborhood, and I'm going to vote against it.
I take more issue with the fact that it was operating before the hearing, and I can do my best to empathize with the situation that they're in about being out of work, and it got pushed from May to October, and I'm, so I'm, that's the conflict I'm considering right now.
I'll help Dave understand a little bit where I was coming from. It bothers me when it's a non-owner occupied property. It's therefore more prone to have more rentals with less supervision in a neighborhood like this, and as Whitney says, west of Baltic. It just doesn't fit.
All right, then. Do I have a motion? You made a motion. Mike made a motion, and I believe the motion was denied. I need a second, please.
I second the motion to deny.
We'll go ahead and call for the vote, please.
I will call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
No.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
This is yes to deny. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
No.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
No.
And Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
Our recorded vote of six to zero, oh, sorry, six to three, agenda item number 10 has been denied.
Moving on to the next item, item number 11. Michelle and Alex Mihari, conditional use permit for a short-term rental located at 1920 Millbrook Court.
Hi.
Hello, I'm Alex Merle.
I'm Michelle Merle, and we currently live at 1920 Millbrook Court, Virginia Beach, 23453, and applying for a permit for short-term rental.
Great, thank you. Would you like to-
Oh, you want me to-
Take a few minutes and discuss your application?
Sure. So, my husband and I, we've had long-term and short-term rentals. And our short-term rental is in South Carolina, and we have been renting out our current home as our primary residence on the weekends during the summer. And we're a military family, so we're going to have to move away probably next year. And right now, the local government and the federal government, they're not really requiring tenants to pay their rent. So, this is our only option.
We moved out here to Virginia Beach about four years ago, and from then, we have made about $50,000 worth of changes to the household to include the roof, flooring, interior, exterior. If you looked on Zillow right now, you wouldn't see the same house that we have invested heavily into.
And then, we do understand concerns of the neighbors, and, you know, they're our friends, so we care about them, too. There are some extra steps that we did to try to mitigate parties because we did have one instance over the summer. And we put a noise monitoring system inside the home that is non-recording. It just alerts you if it goes above 75 decimals. And then, we have security cameras on the front and back. And then, we're, we want to give a legal authority to one of the neighbors to, you know, kick anybody out if they need to.
On that note, we have also moved towards, one complaint is commonly trash. We've increased our trash from one trash can to three, just in case anything does occur. We've also extended the driveway to facilitate all vehicles to be able to be parked according to the local legislation.
And we just had this week installed argon gas windows, which reduces noise transfer by 25%. And we also do a three-night minimum versus, you know, one night minimum to try to eliminate a party.
And another step to prevent parties is we also require them to be 21-years or older to book.
That's it. And we have a short-term rental in South Carolina. It used to be a long-term rental, but the long-term tenants kind of terrified the neighbors. So, now, the neighbors help us keep watch over it, and it's been pretty successful. And that's it.
Hold on one second, please. Mr. Weiner?
So, you're saying you might be leaving in about six months?
About a year.
About a year? Do you have a-
Maybe.
Maybe. Do you have a company to take care of the place while you're gone, or look over?
We do.
Basically, who's gonna be the person to be called, with that to be at the house in 30 minutes? Do you have somebody lined up?
I do. Her name is Magdalia Sanchez, and so I used to clean vacation rentals in the area. So, I've been networking with other hosts to help me, and like I said, I would more than be happy to ask one of the neighbors to do it that live right next door.
And you live there now?
I do.
And you rented a house out this past summer?
Yes, on the weekends, while we went camping. And we were, we were there during the period. We'd come by and check.
When did you, how long have you been paying, how long have you been registered?
Registered.
You have registered with the city to pay taxes?
Oh, we do, yeah. We did that before we rented it out.
Before, okay. So, when you went to go file for conditional use permit, were you asked, or did you ask a question about renting it? Because you're not supposed to be renting it out.
Well, on the website, it says as long as it's your primary residence, you can.
Is that correct?
Well, it was in 2019.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second.
Oh, it may be that they're referring to the allowance for home sharing, which is if it's your primary residence, and you're there when the person is renting. I'm unsure what website, which portion of the website she's referring to, so.
And you did state that you have registered it with the commissioner, correct?
Yes, yes.
And they do, and can you tell me when you did that again?
Um, October 2019. And we rented it out the first time in June, I believe, of 2020.
So, I'm fairly sure that when you register, they tell you, you cannot rent that house until you get your conditional use permit. I mean-
I just registered. I don't, yeah, I went just to City Hall and just registered.
Right, and the, okay, and they stamp it in red?
Yeah, yeah.
That says you can't rent it?
Oh, no, it didn't say that. No, it was just a stamp with the date on it.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. So, when, so when you read that on the, so y'all haven't been there to why they rented the house?
We do go there, yes.
I'm saying, you're there renting the house, but you're there and renting the house also?
Yeah, we come by and to make sure everything's okay, and-
I mean, you're not living, you're not staying in a house and then renting a room. You're renting the whole house out?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, one of the questions we had for you was that you neither agreed or disagreed with the city council's recommendation conditions.
Oh, yeah, we spoke with Mr. Miller about that, and we told him yesterday that we'll just, we agree. We were just unsure what it meant, and so he clarified, so, and like I said, we want the neighbors to be happy, so this seems like a good compromise.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much.
Michael Hall. Please state your name for the record.
Michael Hall, I'm sorry. Mike Hall. I live at 1920 Millbrook, which is next door, two houses down. And they rented it all summer. As you can see, when you took the pictures, it's rented during the day, during the week. It was all week, all summer. Kids can't play out front because you have no idea who's in and who's out. And we're not three blocks from the beach. We're in Landis Town, and this is constantly going on. I'm totally opposed to it. Police have been out, trash cans, I mean, I'm in a cul-de-sac, one way in, one way out, and this is what I'm dealing with. Totally opposed to it. Thank you.
Sir, I have a question for you. Can you speak to the parties that they refer to and people being now required to be over 21?
I mean, 21, when I was 21, college kid, I mean, yeah, that's a party house. That's what they're doing. They rented out there in a week, yeah. They come by and check after we've been complaining. This is, it's a neighborhood. It's not, we're not down at the beach. We're way off the beach. If I was going to do that, I'd live down at the beach. I get it. You go to an X-Head, you rent a beach house out for a week. But this is in a community. I just don't want it at all.
Yes, George?
Do you recall how many, I mean, just how many times you've complained?
Three or four times. I know the cops have been out twice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
No, ma'am, no additional speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll go ahead and let the applicant come back up, please. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I would like to address, we only had one incident, and we went to each neighbor to ask them what happened. And they told us that, you know, the police were called. And I asked them, why didn't they call us? Because they have our phone numbers. So, and we were there Monday through Thursday, and we only had like one reservation that was more than like three days.
I just want to address-
Yes, George?
Who just came up? He said three times. Did you get three calls?
No.
No.
No, we, we talked to each neighbor, and they said there was only one, one incident, and it was that one party. And that's when we regulated the parking. We sent out emails to all our people that were coming in saying, hey, the neighbors had a bad experience. If you were planning to do this, we'll give you a free, full refund.
Okay, thank you. Someone close it to the commission right now, and close it to public and open it to the commission and discussion. Anyone?
Okay, okay. Again, we have certain criteria that you have to meet, and it seems they meet it. But again, I put a lot of weight on the neighbors, so I know we've gotten one person come up, but it's enough for me. So, I guess you guys know that I won't be supporting it.
Unlike the last one, this, to me, this is definitely a neighborhood away from the beach. It's uncharacteristic to the neighborhood. That's probably the main reason I'm not gonna support it. This is uncharacteristic to the neighborhood. And it's, I don't believe in short-term rentals anywhere far from the beach, so I'm not gonna support this one either.
Yes, Tom?
I can, I agree with that. I think it's definitely in a neighborhood, and we've got some conflicting reports from the neighbors, but I still put credence in some of the, what they've had to say, but I just think it's not the right place. So, when you're ready, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. We deny the application.
I'll second.
All right. We have a second by Commissioner Weiner, and we'll call for a question, please.
I'll call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
I abstain as I was not present for the discussion.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
And we have Mr. Barnes absent, Mr. Crosston absent, Mr. Graham absent, and Mr. Edman absent. Our recorded vote of seven with one abstention. Our recorded vote of seven with one abstention. I'm sorry. Our recorded vote of six with one abstention. Agenda item number eleven has been denied.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Item number twelve, Sean Riley, conditional use permit for a short-term rental located at six zero four Twenty-third and a Half Street. We have no speakers on this item.
I am a speaker. I'm Sean Riley. I, I believe I'm here because we didn't agree or disagree with the second condition requested by city council for, um, no more than one rental in a seven-day period. And we'll accept that condition. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right, we'll close it, and if I can get a motion or discussion, please.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the short-term rental for six oh four Twenty-third and a Half Street.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
The second by, um, Commissioner Alcaraz, please.
I'll call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
And Mr. Barnes is absent, Mr. Costin is absent, Mr. Graham is absent, and Mr. Edman is absent. Our recorded vote of seven to zero, agenda item number twelve, has been approved.
Okay, we'll move to item number thirteen. Valerie Taylor, conditional use permit for short-term rental for property located at thirty-six forty-four Britt Terrace.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Valerie Taylor, and this is my husband, Robert Taylor. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to state my case. So, we are the proud owner of the, that lovely house on thirty-six forty-four Britt Terrace. And we're a local resident. And, um, we, our utility purchase the house so that we could accommodate the overflow of our families coming in. Because we have a wi, we have a large family, and they's are spread out across the globe. So when they come, sometimes children, grandchildren, we don't have enough space at our house, which is about fifteen minutes away from there. So, for times, we, we spent a lot of time and pride in decorating it and giving it the, that home touch that we ourselves would enjoy if we, because it was for our children and grandchildren. And then we decided that maybe we could have a dual purpose. So we decided to apply for the short-term permit, so we, we could have, when we're not using it, we would use, we would rent it. In that way, we have access to it when we want it. We're more in control, other than doing a long-term permit. So, um, we are asking you today to consider our application so that we can use the, use it when we want it, and at the same time, get some short-term rental when, when it's, when it's available.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think there was a question, if I recall, was the extra parking space that you need to put in?
Yes.
So I think there was a question of the material being used.
Right.
On that. So do you mind speaking to that?
We, we are in agreement with all the, the recommendations from the planning office, and we want to comply. One of the thing that we, we are, we are environmental people. And we understand, because we live about fifteen minutes from this, and we take care of our property, and we like to see the environment. So what we're researching right now is to see what type of material, because I really don't like that whole lot of concrete stuff. So we're looking to see what material would be best, not to make a, just to put the piece that the planning committee has, um, suggested for us, to make it more, and to make, because it's a lovely community, and it's a lovely house, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our applicant? No, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll close the hearing now and open it up to the commissioners for discussion, and, do we have any speakers?
No, ma'am, there's no other speakers.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're gonna close it and open it up to the commissioners to make a motion and/or for discussion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for thirty-six forty-four Britt Terrace.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Redmond.
I will call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
I'm gonna abstain since I was, uh, in the hallway during most of the presentation.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner? Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
And Mr. Barnes is absent, Mr. Costin absent, absent, and Mr. Edman absent. Our recorded vote of seven to one, agenda item number thirteen has been approved. With one abstention. Six with one abstention. Agenda item number thirteen has been approved. Yeah, I heard, uh, seven, yeah. Our recorded vote of seven with one abstention, agenda item number thirteen has been approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number fourteen.
Red Lion Properties LLC, unconditional use permit for a short-term rental at one thousand and nine Barclay Square.
Good afternoon. I'm Dana Sampson. This is my husband, Jason Sampson. Um, I don't have much of a prepared statement, um, because I believe we probably would have been part of the consent agenda, but we disagreed with the conditions. All of our, uh, current application meets everything accorded, um, to the current ordinance. My only issue, um, just to kind of address it, um, is I'm a little confused with the, um, question if we agreed or disagreed to the conditions of the reduction in contracts and bedroom size. I didn't, I guess I'm not really understanding how, if the ordinance reads one way, um, and city council hasn't voted on these additional conditions, why we have to agree or disagree to them. Um, but we have found we, um, have been hosting at, uh, Chick's Beach Property. It's another two-bedroom. And it's consistently been about families of four or five, staying between three and five nights. So a reduction of two per bedroom and one per week is sort of not ideal as to what we've been seeing over the last, I guess, maybe three or four summers. So that's our reason behind that. But everything else, we need everything according to all the other conditions.
So I appreciate your, um, confusion, but as of going forward now, that that is part of the condition, um, sort of, that comes from council. So that is part of the application. It read, at this time, processing your application, it is two per bedroom and one per week. And so our question to you is, do you agree with that?
Absolutely not. No, unfortunately, we don't agree with that.
No, okay. Well, then, thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, hold on, Mr. Weiner.
Hold on, wait, come back a second. You understand that we have two, two different ways to go about this. I mean, we can just vote no for it, and you can go away, and then you won't have, then you won't have any short-term rental at all.
Right.
You could agree to it, we could, you know, go through it, process here, and you could have a short-term rental.
Yeah, the problem, the, the biggest reason to disagree with this is because we currently have others within the city of Virginia Beach. And at this point, we are grandfathered in with those. And if we agree to this, we're agreeing to basically close and not allow ourselves to do these moving forward when we're no longer grandfathered. So we have to make a stand one way or the other, and that's the reason.
Okay.
It's fine, it's fine.
Yeah. You know, and one of the things that Jason and I were talking about, and I don't know if, you know, council has thought about it, but I, I get probably with the two-per-bedroom thing, it's a bigger issue with the bigger homes. You know, if you've got a four, or five, six-bedroom, you're looking at a heck of a lot of people. Versus a two-bedroom like us, um, it's essentially taking away a, a family of five, a mom and a dad and three kiddos, from staying in our place. We've got two bedrooms, um, and a pull-out couch, or an air mattress. So to say just two per bedroom is a little, a little constricting, I would say. And, you know, it's like, it's kept me up at night, thinking about it, because this has been a process. Um, and we really appreciate, um, planning commission, and especially our, our staff member, Will. He's been excellent with answering any questions we have. But, you know, something to consider, um, perhaps is maybe two per bedroom, but, um, give an allowance for maybe a common area, like a living room, where maybe we say two per bedroom, but one or two additional. So that way you can use the pull-out couch for the extra kids and things like that. Also, you know, we'd seen floated, and I, and there's just been a lot of, um, changes and, um, people bringing things forth, and I, under, it's, the inconsistency when we participated in the initial, um, talks about the ordinance, all that stuff. We came to all the meetings at the beginning of January, you know, agreed with it. I, we wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be restrictions and things like that on there. But, um, you know, eliminate it to one contract per week, when the average family can only afford to go away three to five nights, is a little silly, especially in high summer.
It's a lot of long weekends.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You are very welcome.
Thanks.
Um, well, hold on one second. I think, um, Commissioner Redmond-
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Klein have a question for you.
I wanna, I wanna get away from this agree/disagree language. That's not what we're talking about. I get that you disagree with it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure I agree with it.
Right.
The law says one thing.
Yes, that's what our contention is.
It's contradictory.
I agree with you. City council's imposed conditions on each application. Can you hear me? Am I doing this right?
Yes, yes, sir.
The city council's imposed applications on, on each one of these now, so that that's, you're, you're gonna get a denial unless you have two bedrooms. So, please stop saying agree/disagree. It's a question of whether or not you accept the app, the, the conditions. If you do not accept the, the conditions, you're not gonna have an additional use permit to operate your short-term rental.
I know, and it's like, you know, and-
Okay, timeout, please, please, please. I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on this, because we have-
Very limited.
We haven't had people be very clear about this, and we'd like to be very clear.
Yeah.
If you accept the conditions, that means you will abide by the con- conditions. That means two people per bedroom, one rental a week.
Mm-hmm.
That's not the same as agreeing or disagreeing with it. So my question is, do you accept the conditions? And would you abide by the conditions? Not whether you like it or not.
Right.
Because you're gonna have to if you-
Yeah, and I understand that.
See, and that's the thing, is that wasn't the, the point of originally, when we applied for the conditional use permit, those were not conditions of an accept or not accept.
Okay, hold on a second. Please, please, I'm asking you a straight question.
Right.
Do you accept or do you not accept the conditions?
I would say we're probably in agreement that we wouldn't accept those conditions, because then we'd be bound by, chances are, a lot of our reservations are gonna fall exactly within those parameters. So, you know, we would naturally, but, you know.
We've also, we've also heard from the city and through talks-
You answered my question.
That you're talking about, um, in addition to not just a week, but maybe so many-
Per year.
Reservations per year. So there's inconsistency even what's coming from-
Excuse me.
The city.
You have answered my question.
Okay, sure.
And I thank you.
I appreciate it. I did, Mrs., mm, sure.
Uh, one of the things that the, the council is looking at, another revision, um, is to change the requirements as it comes to children.
Right.
Does that impact your-
Uh, that would certainly be helpful, uh, because we're not going to have more than four people if it's two couples traveling together. If it's, it's only in a, in a family situation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We don't lose four houses, so.
Yeah, we only rent to families, in couples.
Um, were you here earlier this morning for the presentation?
No, I was not.
Okay, 'cause there was a presentation this morning, um, planning commission and council will be looking at, uh, overlay districts. This prop, and it'll be allowed by right if it's an overlay district. It will not be allowed if it's not in an overlay district. This will not, under the current map-
Right.
That we saw this morning.
It falls outside of the-
This would be outside the overlay district. I just wanna-
Yeah, and we'd have to make a business decision to do, you know, what we needed to do if that wasn't the case. So, thank you, guys.
Well, we respect that decision, and we thank you very much. Do we have any speakers on this?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Andrews, uh-
Thank you.
That's the only speaker card I had for that item.
All right, thank you very much. Well, then we will close this and open it up to the commissioners for a motion. Mr. Redmond?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I, uh, move that we deny the application.
Second, please?
A second.
We have a second from Commissioner Weiner?
I will call for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent, Mr. Costin absent, and Mr. Edman is absent. Our recorded vote of eight to zero, item number fourteen, has been denied.
Next item on the agenda, item number fifteen, Shelley Arnaldi, conditional use permit for a short-term rental at thirty-nine twenty-one Whooping Crane Circle in the Bayside District.
Hello, okay. Um, sorry, I'm a terrible, uh, speaker. My name is Shelley Arnaldi, um, so I'm here requesting a conditional use permit. So I've owned this home since nineteen ninety-seven. I bought it when I was in the military. And then I had to leave due to career moves. And I was overseas for the majority of the time, and I'd been renting it long-term since then. I've had several turnovers, and frankly, it's been hard to keep the property up. I kept it. I, I wanna use it later. I don't know if I'll be able to come back to Hampton Roads. I live in Northern Virginia right now. But, um, I do return to Virginia Beach as often as I can, and my husband and I have four children. So we found an opportunity, I found an opportunity to use it. So, uh, I had two instances in twenty sixteen. One of my renters, um, fell asleep and caused a fire and burned the kitchen down. So I had an opportunity to totally renovate it due to a fire. It was an accident. It was long-term rentals. I fixed it. I fixed it up, thinking, you know, this is gonna be my retirement home, maybe. And then I rented it out again, long-term, and in three years, it was almost destroyed again, you know, from pets to... The problem is, the house is technically, it's supposed to be two bedrooms, but it's three bedrooms with three and a half bathrooms. It doesn't have suitable parking for the permitting process. But everybody, there's twenty-six houses in the cul-de-sac, and there are three adults or more living in all the houses with three or more cars. So it's, it's a beach neighborhood with a lot of single people. There are a lot of parties, and it's frankly, um, my rental, I believe, is, is improving the neighborhood, because I fixed it for my family to use. We come down and use it. There are a lot of noisy parties, and it's, it's kinda disturbing the people that live there. Now, I've only used VRBO. I restrict it to twenty-five or older. I have a very large security deposit, because I furnished it with very nice things, because it's our second home. It's not, it's not for a business. It's not for a profit. And I was renting it only to capture some of the costs to renovate it. And I also lost my job last summer. It was unexpected. So I was hoping not to have to rent it at all, because frankly, it's very nice. But I did rent it out. I looked into short-term rental. I looked at all the requirements. I followed them. And I've talked to my neighbors. I come down often to check out what's going on, and I have a camera. And I haven't heard or received any negative complaints about actual people staying in the home. So I've, I've been asking. I talked to my neighbors. I do have support from neighbors, and I have opposition from neighbors that you're gonna hear. But it hasn't been due to actual activities in the home or people, because it's, almost all of them have been families with small children. Because it's, it's a walking distance to the beach, but it's not Virginia Beach. There aren't bars, and it's not a beach area. It's a, it is a, a beautiful place for vacation. place for vacations, but it's also, um, many of the people have been visiting milit- military members, and, um, sometimes there was a medical issues where they're visiting people to help them recover, so it's been, but because I charge a lot, and I wanna keep it nice, people have been very, very respectful, and I've been very fortunate to keep it in the condition it is. So, I mean, I really pray that I can continue to use it this way, because I, I, the alternative is going back to long-term renting, and, and I think that would just destroy the property, and it would take away my ability to use it for my family, so. Um, the Aries Civic League, we have lots of discussions, and they're gonna come talk to you, it's not a homeowners association, and we're not required to be part of it, but, like I said, the cul-de-sac has twenty-six units in it, there are cars piled on top of each other on sidewalks, many of the units are long-term rentals, and they're in terrible condition, and I've got, you know, I did, I brought photos, I don't know if it's necessary, but I have new siding and windows, I'm, my house is, is perfect, because I wanna use it, and so I just, I, I went through the issues that they have, and I just don't believe that I have any, there's nothing negative about the way I'm using my home, despite what they're saying. And they said, so the age is twenty-five or older, um, less than two cars, and no parties, I mean, I restrict party, there, there are no parties allowed, and I've not had one party or noise incidents, and frankly, last summer, there were two that I experienced living there, where I had to ask people to turn their music down, so, and those are long-term rentals or owners, so, I just, I really, although there are some objections, they appear to be totally anecdotal, 'cause I have gone on next door and asked for anybody to call or PM me if you have a problem, and nobody's been specific as to an event that happened. The police have never been called, there's never been any problems. And quite frankly, my reviews on VR, VRBO, they've all been five stars, they've all been great, and almost the only negatives have been the neighborhood, because it's too crowded, and there's too much noise, so, you know, I would just say, I, I don't believe I'm bringing down the value in any way, or causing any detriment to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Charles Hartman.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi there, hi there, hi there, I'm Charles Hartman, I'm the Civic League President for Aries on the Bay. We're a tight-knit, tight-knit community, and the neighborhood that thirty-nine twenty-one Whooping Crane Court is located. The Civic League opposes this applicant's STR permit application. We, the Civic League, oppose this applicant, because this neighborhood has specific restricted covenants barring rentals under thirty days, and because the neighborhood is unsuitable for STRs due to high density, limited parking, and intense neighborhood opposition. If you're not familiar with Aries on the Bay, take a look at the map on the right, um, you can see the density of neighbor, neighborhood is clearly high. We consist of mostly three-story townhomes and traditional single-family homes, we're bordered on the west by Bay Lake Pines, we're part of Ocean Park. Of the two hundred and twenty-five units that comprise Aries of the Bay, sixty-nine are rentals in twenty-twenty. As the applicant stated, Whooping Crane Court has twenty-six townhomes, twenty-six, and the only real parking is at the entrance to Whooping Crane Court, or eight townhomes on Purple Martin Lane, four on each side, but up against the entrance and have yards. Parking is the number-one issue in Aries. On the court itself, that the applicant resides, or the rental property resides, there are only seven public parking spaces. You can park seven to eight cars on the entrance, so as a total amount of parking on Whooping Crane, Crane Court, is about twenty to twenty-five cars. Bear in mind that in the summer, we're one of Ocean Park's public beach accesses, and parking is extremely difficult. Townhome driveways, which she has here, maybe will allow two cars to park there, and one of them will block the sidewalk. The applicant is a long-term resident, as she stated, and, uh, she knew that by doing this, she would probably anger the residents in the Civic League, because we do have these restricted covenants. She started her rental activity in the summer of two thousand nineteen, that's when we first were informed that this activity was taking place. We're not an HOA, as she stated, we're Civic League, so our only tools are reason, shame, and lawyers. Well, none of the first two worked out, so now we're at the lawyer stage. How did this happen? Did she have a hearing where we were unaware of? After looking at every minutes of the planning commission from two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we saw that she had never applied for a permit until December of two thousand nineteen. The applicant was sent a cease and desist letter from our legal team back in January. She states, however, that she does not have to abide by it, because now that the city has enacted these STRs, she in essence is allowed to have this rental. There are other neighbors here that will attest to the oppositions of this, but the reality is, is that as a Civic League, we cannot contone, nor do we wish to have STRs in our neighborhood. We're a tight-knit community. When people come in from out-of-state with out-of-state cars, we lose that tight-knit cohesive neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Lisa Uer. I'm a property manager for fourteen vacation rules throughout Virginia Beach, I'm also a residence of Aries on the Bay. When I purchased my house in two thousand three, I was aware of the deed restrictions and covenants that existed in our neighborhood, and knew that if I ever wanted to rent my property, that I would not be able to do so for less than thirty days. While I agree that vacation rentals are an asset to the city of Virginia Beach, I do not think that they should be allowed in Aries on the Bay, due to the existing parking and traffic issues that we deal with daily, and because of the congestion and high density of our neighborhood. In addition, I see that Ms. Ardon, Ardonis is requesting a conditional use permit for a two-bedroom short-term rental, however, it is still currently listed as a three-bedroom rental on the vacation rental platform. She does not have the appropriate parking spaces, which is required by y'all, um, for three bedrooms, three parking spaces of nine by eighteen. I'm also aware of the fact that, um, Mrs. Ardoni lives in Northern Virginia, and there is a thirty-minute, um, you should be within thirty minutes of the vacation rental that you own. So, I highly oppose of it.
Mrs. Uer?
Yes.
I just wanna ask a question, don't you have, um, I'm just curious, 'cause I've, the only reason, um, don't you have some, you have several short-term rentals, don't you?
I do, I manage fourteen.
Okay, that's what I thought, 'cause I've seen your name-
Throughout, throughout Virginia Beach.
On applications before, and so-
So I'm very familiar with managing vacation rentals, and the rules and regulations that I have to abide by, um, one, being registered, which each one of mine are, um, with the city of Virginia Beach, in a timely fashion, um, prior to running it as a short-term rental.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Redman.
Ms. Uer.
Mrs. Uer.
Yes.
Um, just-
Come on back.
For your edification, and your husbands, and everyone who might be listening, we do not officiate between private parties with regard to their homeowners' association, or, um, or deeds, or covenants restrictions, our role is purely land use. Miller says he made that clear to y'all, but that does not seem to have been clear. It is completely irrelevant to us, whether there are deed restrictions, covenants, um, or anything else that might affect that, purely land use. So whether or not this use is appropriate in the given place, according to the ordinance, um, and the other kinds of considerations that would normally go into a conditional use permit, that is all we do. We do not do anything with regard to that, so, um, uh, going forward, I would, I would caution you, that's, that's not a part of our consideration, it won't be a part of city council's consideration.
Okay.
It, it is purely a land, land use matter.
Well, we don't have the parking, um-
I got you, I heard you the first time, I just wanna make that clear.
The parking is the main issue.
I, we, I heard you the first time, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Got you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mrs. Uer, um, I think what Mr. Redman, um, was getting at here is just that, as he said, we don't, we don't, we don't decide that, that's really a civil matter, that's a matter for a judge, and for lawyers, it's, it's, you know, we're, we're here, we're with, you know, with regard to land use, um, so, I think they're kind of, there's really kind of two separate matters that, that you have, um, one is civil, and one is, is here, uh, dealing with zoning, so. So I'm not disagreeing that, that there's a deed restriction, I'm just saying that that doesn't have anything to do with us.
Okay, well, still, it's-
If there's a deed restriction, a judge will decide that, not, not us.
All right, well, we do have a parking issue, obviously.
Oh, I, I, I hear you loud and clear.
Huge.
Hear you loud and clear on, on the other items, thank, thank you.
I got one, sorry, I got, Ms. Uer, sorry, I was trying to get your attention. So, um, do you live in this, uh, near this?
I do.
Do you live in the same model?
Yeah, I do.
And how many bedrooms do you have?
I personally have a two-bedroom.
So you don't live in the same model, then?
No, well, we had a three-bedroom, we made it into a two-bedroom. Mine backs up to her residence.
Okay, thank you.
But, so it's, I live on Rookery, which is one street over from Whooping Crane, and it's, it's very congested throughout the whole neighborhood.
But my question, so originally it was three-bedroom, and you made it into two?
I did.
And you have the same model?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, but I also reside there year-round.
Please state your name for the record.
Hey, good afternoon, uh, Miss Chair, and Commissioners, my name is Greg Lewis, I'm a homeowner at, uh, Rookery Way, which is, it's on the back end of, of Whooping Crane, my property actually, uh, we, we have an easement between us, but I'm actually her back, I'm Ms. Arnoldi's back neighbor, and I'm here to, uh, make a recommendation to vote against approving this. Um, as, as Chuck alluded, this is a, uh, we, we are a beach neighborhood, we have, we have beach access, it's a beautiful place, but it is first and foremost a neighborhood. Uh, I've been a homer there since, uh, since two thousand fourteen, retired from the military there, and I, I love our neighborhood, we've got a great, uh, great mix, um, mostly long-term renters, uh, long-term renters or, or owners that actually live there, uh, great community, uh, kids, kids play together, we're, we're friendly when folks come and visit, understand it's, it's beach season. Uh, I don't think you'll see anyone from our, uh, community, uh, involved in Flotopia, uh, and that's the type of thing that I, I think we, we might see more of, if, if this turns into a, a short-term rental type of community, uh, and you all know, all know how that, uh, played out in the, in the national news. I did not, I did, uh, in, in the past year, I have heard a couple parties back there, uh, I did not actually, my, it was actually my daughter, who lives on the, on the backside of our house, uh, complained about the, the noise that was back there in the evenings on several nights, I kinda, you know, we are a beach community, there are, there are some fun parties there, as, as Mr. Arnoldi, uh, mentioned, uh, so I didn't really, I didn't call the police at that, at that stage, I, I have not actually called the police, I can say that there, there have been several parties back there, and noisy, my, my, my daughter can attest to that, uh, if this, this does get approved, I will probably start calling the cops when there are noisy parties. Um, it's a, it's, again, it's a nice neighborhood, the parking situation is, is rough, uh, has been talked to, um, I am a member of the Civic League, and I just say, uh, let's, let's vote against this, so, thank you. Any questions?
So, do you, um, are you, are you saying that the, the parties are, are actually coming from, um, Ms. Arnoldi's property, is that, as opposed to any other?
I, I don't know if they specifically, I, I think, I believe some of them did, I knew there was, there was sort of a window where there was about a week of loud parties, and it wasn't there, so, I, I looked out, uh, I, I believe, I believe it was hers, um, there, we have about four different, uh, air, uh, four different rentals behind us, 'cause it's town, uh, townhouses, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Stacy Kellum. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Stacy Kellum. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the council, the commission, and fellow citizens of Virginia Beach, I am Stacy Kellum, and I'm here today to express opposition to the proposed short-term rental conditional use permit for Ms. Shelley Arnoldi's townhouse at thirty-nine twenty-one Whooping Crane Circle in the Aries on the Bay neighborhood, just offshore drive. That's a key element here, neighborhood. Aries on the Bay, just like Keelingwood, Chelsea, Kings Grant, Thalia, Hunt Club, Boris, Fox Chase, any of those other great neighborhoods in Virginia Beach, Aries on the Bay is a I moved into my home twenty-one years ago, right next door to Ms. Arnoldi's property, twenty-one years. This is my home, I feel safe here, I feel comfortable, it's my neighborhood, it's my community. I have neighbors, the kind of folks you can lean on in times of need, to mow the grass if you've had surgery, or, or down for six weeks, watch out for each other's kids, which we have a lot of in our, in our area, they're the kind who will watch your house if you go out of town, they'll walk your dog, they'll take up your trashcans, these are people you can depend on, and they can depend on me. Ms. Arnoldi has been operating her property as a motel for the past eighteen months, or two summers, anyway, without city approval, without community approval, without anyone's approval, because Ms. Arnoldi doesn't live here, she lives in Alexandria area in Northern Virginia, she's not a neighbor, she's not anyone that we can depend on. She doesn't really care about Aries on the Bay or Virginia Beach, she just wants a place where she and her family can come for a few sporadic weeks during the year, otherwise, she doesn't care anything about it, other than it's rented. She doesn't know the people she's renting to, they might be good people, but they might be child molesters, rapists, drug dealers, or manufacturers, they could be crooks just casing the neighborhood, looking for easy targets and crime opportunities. They might just be nuisances, bringing three or four carloads of people with them, taking up parking spaces that our small little court just can't accommodate, not attending to the trash, leaving cans in the street, trash on the beach, dog poop in the people's yards, they run over landscaping timbers-
Thank you for your time.
I do, I, please, I do. Uh, Ms. Kellum, um, you mentioned some incidents, um, did you call the owner?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned some incidents that have happened while, while she was renting, did you call the owner?
Yes, yes, parties, and a fire in the backyard, and-
Okay, um, how's the parking situation?
They're loud.
The parking?
The parking is awful, the, the neighborhood's all, I mean, the court is already-
I'm talking about the specific lot, the specific property.
She only has a two-car driveway, and it does straddle the sidewalk, and I, I have seen at least, I have seen many occasions where the renters brought four cars. I think they come from out of town, and maybe have friends that live in Virginia Beach, and they invite their friends to come over, so they can all hang out together.
Okay, and when you had an incident, and you called her, did, did she respond?
I have called her, um, and in the one case where they were having a bonfire in the backyard, a trashcan fire, and she said, "I'll call them," but they didn't put the fire out, and we're wood-sided community, it was a windy night, there were embers blowing up, it was right under a tree, I was afraid there would be a fire, I don't want my house to catch fire, but I'm not her property manager, and I, you know, I live next door to the property, I don't wanna be responsible for it, and with her being absent, you know, she was looking for me to be the property manager, she offered to pay me money to be the property manager, but I, I don't wanna be responsible for looking out for a townhouse, because it's attached to me, you know, I have my own responsibilities, I don't need to take on her-
And you say you live next door?
I'm attached to her, yes.
How many bedrooms do you have? How many bedrooms do you have in your unit?
Uh, my unit has three, and her, her unit also has three, the last time I was in the unit, it was configured for eight people.
Okay.
But it's a three-bedroom, three and a half bath-
All right.
-townhome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Severt. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Severt. And first, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for hearing these comments regarding Ms. Arnoldi's property. I'm actually here not to oppose, I guess I would, from my observations this summer, I would be in support of how she intends to use her property. My family is a military family, and we just moved back this summer from overseas. So we had to roam here for two weeks in July. So, my wife purchased our property, which is right next door to hers, in 2000. So, off and on, we have been in the neighborhood for, you know, five or six of those 20 years. During the two weeks of July, when we were there, I think I saw three families or renters come to the unit. And I did not witness any loud or abusive behavior, or things that would cause me concern. I cannot speak to the fire that was mentioned, because I did not see that. Our unit is about a four-minute walk to the beach. It is a beach neighborhood. From Memorial Day to Labor Day, it is that type of neighborhood where you're going to have individuals who are there to enjoy the beach, have a good time, there are sporadic parties. But with 200 units in Ares on the Bay, those parties could be from owners, long-term renters, short-term rentals, or people just coming for the day. There's no way to identify one way or the other unless you actually know who's living in a particular unit. So, that is just a nature of this neighborhood. In summary, I believe how a tenant, lessy, short or long-term renter, guest or owner behaves has more to do with their values, habits, and to a lesser degree, economic situation than the duration of their residence in any particular improvement on a property. So, all I can witness too is that during the two weeks that we were there this summer, we're currently stationed up north in DC, but we are using our property. We've been here three times since we've moved back from overseas. I have not witnessed any negative activity which would cause me concern specifically with her unit. And having been...
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Henry Farn. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Henry Farn. I am here to oppose the short-term lease. I live on Rookery Way, behind her property. I'm not opposed to people going out and having cookouts and celebrate, but seven days a week, it's kind of tough. They are renting it out as sure as by the beach, and they're there to party. We do not have security, or cleanup crews, or they go to the beach, they bring glass bottles to the beach. Who would bring glass to a beach, I don't understand, but that's what they're doing, and I'm totally opposed to it. Thank you.
Lisa Greerson. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Ashley Alyssa Greerson, and I don't, I didn't write anything down. I'm just going to talk to you. From what I've experienced, I live right across the street, and I have witnessed many, many things from the property across the street. I have no idea, first of all, let me tell you, I have lived in Ares for 20 years. I lived 10 years on Purple Martin, which is the street you need to go down to get to Whooping Crane. And I've lived across the street for 11 years. And I have no idea who Shelley Arnold, or, I've never met her. And I'm also speaking for some of the neighbors that could not be here today because they have poor health conditions and because of COVID, they could not come here. They have sent emails, hopefully you've gotten them. But I have witnessed many things from the past two summers. You know, late-night yelling, screaming, public urination. I've even had people walking their dogs in my yard, letting them poop, and then I'm knocking on the window saying, pointing, "I'm not cleaning up after your dog." Like I said, the owner, she keeps on calling at her home. She's never lived there as long as I've been there. She's never come over to introduce herself. And so basically, what she's just trying to do is make a little money, you know? And we are a very close family neighborhood, we have a lot of small children. Parking is horrendous, and, you know, people, you need to drive very slow coming through there because of so many kids on their bikes, and it's just very hazardous. And I am very much opposed. Thank you.
That's all my speakers on this item. My applicant like to step forward, please?
Sorry, I didn't know it was going to be such a long day. Yeah, so I don't know a lot of those people personally, and I was surprised to hear a lot of that, because I have gone next door and given my name. I did speak with Ms. Greerson, I gave her my phone number, I don't know exactly where she lives. I've asked for any example of anybody who's done any damage or made any noise, and I just, none of that, that seems exaggerated and not true, honestly. That one tenant had a fire pit, I called, I asked them to control it, it's not illegal. The neighbor on the other side has a fire pit, it's not against the law. And so, I mean, I attended to it, I made sure it was out, I said pay attention to it. But the other thing, the, I will say, the neighbors behind, you've got a lot of people on Rookery. I have a recording in August of a party, and I believe it was Lisa Greerson's house, where someone was having a party at 1:00 in the morning, and I walked over and asked them to turn the music down, and they literally flipped me off. And another neighbor was there, and I don't want to call the police, I do want to use it, and I, you know, I know this is a lot. But, like, I understand, and I do like the neighborhood, that's why I want to keep it. That's why I want to come back and stay here, just because I don't know them personally. I've never put anyone out, and I wouldn't, and I did not ask her to manage my property. I just, you know, I have a property manager, I have someone that cleans it and takes care of it, and comes in 20 minutes. I have a maintenance man. So, basically, a lot of these people I don't know, I have tried to get in touch with the Civic League and said, "I'll communicate with you, and I'll be honest about everything," but this is, a lot of this is surprising to me, because I really just, I want to use the house for me and my family, it's not about making money, it's not a business. So, I just hope you will consider allowing me to use my home, so that I can maintain the home that I've created, instead of letting it go back to this long-term rental, where it gets destroyed again. That's all.
I just want to get the bedrooms, and I'm sorry I keep asking everyone, because I looked it up, and, I mean, you're advertising three nice-sized bedrooms with an en suite bed with the bathrooms, 400 feet from the beach.
I'm going to change it, well, I was told that it could only be two bedrooms because of the parking, and so I'm going to turn the downstairs bedroom into a family room. I've agreed to do it, I'm not, if it's not approved, I'm not going to do it. You know, then I'll go into either long-term renting, or, you know, I'll stop doing what I'm doing. But, yeah, all of the houses there have three bedrooms, and I would say even the neighbors that are speaking have two to three people living there with two to three cars. So, you know, I will reduce it to two bedrooms, I'll do the same number count, because I still want to use it for my family.
I'm just saying that you're advertising three nice...
Yeah, no, I have, I have not changed it. I also haven't got the million-dollar umbrella insurance yet. I have a quote, and I'm ready. If this gets turned down, I'm going to cancel everything and reevaluate what I'm going to do with the house, how I'm going to use it, if I'm going to sell it, I don't know. But absolutely, I can comply with the two bedrooms, making a family room. I asked, I spoke honestly with Will about it. Everyone else in the neighborhood has three bedrooms, but if I have to have two bedrooms in order to use it, I will make it two bedrooms.
All right, thank you.
So, just a question, are you registered? I assume you're registered with the Commission?
I am.
And yet, there's some date questions about you're managing a short-term rental for, I think somebody said, is it correct, the fall, for two summers?
Yeah, so last summer, it was the summer of '19, that's the last renters that moved out. That's when I decided to furnish it, and I wasn't sure what I was going to do, if it was going to be short-term rental, but I wanted to furnish it and use it for my family. And I lost my job beginning of August.
Right, right.
So, that's when I decided to actually do short-term, yes, I did.
To start renting it as a short-term rental.
But I did go to the Planning Office to, like, I got the ordinance and the requirements, and I looked at, I mean, I don't think, I obviously didn't do anything with the bedrooms, but I went and I spoke with someone to understand the process and the application. I didn't know the timeline or the restrictions. So, I also didn't even know about the Commission until Christmas, so I, you know, as soon as I learned it, I...
So, let me, I'm just going to interrupt you real quick, just for the sake of time here. So, you started short-term renting it about, approximately about a year ago, which I sympathize with the fact that you've lost your job. I'm sorry to hear that. And then you went to the Planning Department, and you got the copy of the ordinance and some paperwork, and you read through that, and you didn't understand it.
I'm not saying I didn't understand, I was filling it out, I don't know, it was just...
Just, you just didn't get to it?
I just was, yes, I wasn't...
Okay, and then, can you tell me the date in which you applied to the Commissioner, the revenue?
December, I think it was, December or January?
Of this past year?
Yeah.
Okay. That's great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'll close it and open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Yes, Mr. Redmond?
I don't know what to make about the neighborhood from what I've heard. That said, it is a very dense neighborhood. And my concern with it is, the way that court is arranged, everyone is affected. And that's the part that I have trouble with. Altogether, too much he said, she said today for my liking, and some irrelevant parts too. But this is a very tightly-packed neighborhood, and this property is situated such that there's just no way you can't impact and affect one another. Now, do the short-term rentals have a greater impact than a long-term resident or a long-term rental? I don't know. I know I have neighbors in my neighbor, in my neighborhood, near me, who are longtime owners, and they're loud. And they have a lot of cars. But be that as that may, with regard to this particular use, I can't get over the fact that this strikes me as a very difficult place to have a short-term rental. And it really has much more to do with the site location of the property, the nature of the neighborhood, the parking considerations, the fact that people, even though you can tell them bring only two cars, they might bring three, or they might bring four, and block the sidewalk and all the rest of it, it just doesn't seem like it would work to me. So, with that said, I will not support the application, and would be happy to make a motion shortly. Thanks. I didn't make one yet, but I'm happy to... Madam Chairwoman, I move that we deny the application.
I have a second.
I have a second. Vice Commissioner Graham?
I'll call for the vote. Mr. Alvarez?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
With Mr. Barnes absent, Mr. Costin absent, and Mr. Enman absent, by a recorded vote of eight to zero, Agenda Item Number 15 has been denied.
Item Number 16, Justice Swango, a conditional use permit for short-term rental located at 811 Delaware Avenue in the Beach District.
Hello, my name is Justice Swango.
I'm Jason Swango.
I'll just start off by saying I am a homeowner in the Shattillon area. I actually live on Carolina Avenue, which is just a couple blocks down from Delaware. And, yeah, so we'll be open to any questions that you guys might have.
Well, I'll just state that I own the property at 811 Delaware. I own three properties actually in Shattillon. The one property on Carolina, 521 Carolina, was just approved for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental as well. Been in the community since 2001, I'm a local lawyer, have a law office here locally. Very active in the community, have been a coach here for 20, well, almost since I got here, 2001, for about 20 years. As far as, you know, my daughter, who will help manage this process, lives three blocks away. This is actually a property that my father had lived in, but due to health reasons, he's had to return back to Indiana. The neighbors, currently it's leased out on a year-to-year lease with a special forces guy in one of the military branches, and have no intent today, tomorrow, or certainly in the next year, to actually lease it out. Obviously, it's a short-term rental, having it being tied up on a long-term lease, and hopefully they would stay there for as long as they want. Open to any questions that you would have regarding that particular space.
I think the question on this application, and correct me, fellow Commissioners, if I'm missing something, was the agreeing of the conditions that are put forth in the application.
That's correct.
You do agree?
Actually, I have a fundamental issue with that, I'm going to explain what that is. I think it's important, I think it's improper to ask someone, especially a lawyer, to agree to something without listening to the reason why, there's probably a fundamental issue with it.
Well, I'm going to interrupt you real quick, and I respect that you are an attorney, as my husband is one. And he has a tendency to be a little argumentative as well.
I'm not being argumentative, Chairwoman.
No, I'm not saying you are, but I'm just saying I...
When you say "as well," you're assuming that I'm being argumentative, that's not fair.
There we go, say, there, yeah.
That's not fair.
I feel like I'm in my kitchen. So, with that, I respectfully, I just, the question that we had was that there is a paragraph in the application, and the question going forward is, do you agree with the conditions in the application?
Right, and as I was stating, I received an email from the Planning Commission that says, again, based on guidance from the City Council, "These conditions are recommended by staff, and are now included in every short-term rental condition use permit staff report. Those who disagree with the recommended conditions will likely be called upon to address their view on the subject with the Planning Commissioners and the City Council persons during the public hearings." That was sent to me by Mr. Will Brown. So that's the reason why I'm asking, to inform you on why I have a fundamental issue with answering that question.
Well, then, I apologize for that, because I wasn't copied on that email, and I didn't see that paragraph. So if you would like to give us your view, then...
Sure, would love to give you, love to give you my view. My issue is, is that... My issue is, is that the city council hasn't yet made any determination regarding this particular short-term rental at all, but they're asking for us to agree to potential conditions that they don't even know needs to be imposed. Now, I don't know what they have actually stated to, to Mr. Will or anyone else in the planning commission, but I find it inherently problematic to ask someone to provide a waiver to a group of people that have a, that have the fundamental decision on my property rights here in, in the local city. So, if I, if I say to you, yeah, I'm accepting of conditions that aren't imposed in the statute, um, you're basically asking me to give a waiver on any future issues that I may have with the city, um, whether it be in a more litigious way or not. And I think that's inappropriate. My issue for y'all is you impose those restrictions, not me. I, I didn't impose those. Y'all came out to my property, took a look at it, said, ah, we want to impose inscriptions. Okay, if you want to impose those restrictions, then vote on it and give me the restrictions. But don't say and ask me to agree to restrictions that quite frankly are impossible for me to agree to.
Well, sir, if they're impossible for you to agree to those conditions...
Yeah.
...put forth in the application, then...
Well, I, I, well, if, if, I have a whole diatribe here...
I'm not asking, you know, I tell you what...
...of where I asked the commission and they won't answer the question.
You're asking...
I've asked the question of them, what is the purpose? Like, am I waiving anything, like, and, and they won't answer the question? So, if the planning commission won't answer...
No, sir, you know what, sir, I'm going to stop you right here.
Okay.
Okay? There is a list of recommendations, conditions, in this application.
Mm-hmm.
One through sixteen.
Right.
What the planning staff is asking you...
Mm-hmm.
...to go forward into your application so that it can move on from us and go right to city council, where they will decide what they want, however they see fit, is do you accept these conditions for this application, for you to have a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental at this particular address?
Right.
Okay, that's the question.
I understand.
And the answer is either yes you do or no you don't.
The answer's not that simple, Chairwoman, it's just not that simple. You're asking me to waive, excuse me, please...
I'm not asking you to waive anything, I'm just saying...
That's exactly what you're doing, by asking me to answer a question that you're imposing on us, that's exactly what you're asking me to do. You're asking me to waive, because if I have an issue with what the city does and I have to go litigiously and go protect our property rights, then they're going to ask potentially, they might ask the question, well, did you agree to this?
Did you read the application? When you went on, when you, I just want to ask you a question.
I would really like to answer it without being interrupted.
Well, I'm going to interrupt you.
Okay.
So, this is how, this is, this is, because I'm not going to get into an argument about this, because this is fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Because we do land use, as Mr. Commissioner Redmond stated.
Mm-hmm.
You went to the commissioner's office, you filled out the form, you gave him the thirty dollars, you agreed not to rent your house for, for a short-term rental, correct?
Correct.
And they stamped it red, the lady said you agreed to this...
I don't know if they stamped it red, ma'am, that's not, that's not accurate either. I, I don't know what you're talking about, stamping it red and all that.
They stamped it...
I heard earlier in a previous, that they were supposed to stamp it and say no.
Are we going to continue the banter or are we going to just stop and listen to me?
I'm just trying to correct your wrong, that's all.
Well, I appreciate that so much.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Oliver.
That is well.
Thank you.
With that, you went online, you filled out the application, you submitted the application. Mr. Miller, I believe, is, went out, he took pictures of the property, he asked you to put a sign out at a certain date, it's been up there for thirty days. The form had all these conditions in it, you signed, you checked the box, you signed it, and here we are.
Correct. Here we are, in the same place we were two months ago, and no one asked me if I needed to approve or if I agreed or not.
If you signed everything on the application online, then you accepted or you read it and now we're there.
Well, if I've accepted the conditions, why are you asking me to accept them now if I've signed it and checked some box? That doesn't make any sense. I haven't accepted anything.
Mr. Redmond?
I haven't... That was the most fun I've had all day.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Swango...
It's not fun for me though.
I think what, what she's getting at here...
Yeah.
And, and I think it's important is, the conditions are conditions.
Yes.
They have to be met.
Correct.
Okay, if they're not met, you're not going to get your conditional use permit.
Yes, sir.
You don't get your conditional use permit, can't operate the short-term rental.
Correct.
And we have had an issue lately with people who want to argue about what city council's policy is.
Mm-hmm.
But that's the city council's policy, okay? And so what we're trying to do is ascertain whether or not, going forward, people understand that, who accept it means you have to follow the rules that are imposed as part of it. If you say, I'm not going to follow the rules that are part of it...
I never said I wasn't going to follow the rules.
I'm not, I understand that.
Okay.
But if you don't accept the conditions, you're not going to get your conditional use permit. And we, we've had altogether too much lately of people who want to, who want to complain about the conditions that city council is setting, and, and they're perfectly willing to do that. But be that as it may, I personally am not going to recommend that we, that, that we accept any application or approve any application unless somebody says, I'm going to follow the conditions because those are the rules of the road.
I am a lawyer...
You can disagree with it, you can hate it, all you want.
I am an attorney in, in the area and I'm a law-abiding citizen and, and my, what I'm telling you is, is that if insri, if restrictions are imposed on us, then we have no choice as law-abiding citizens but to follow them. But you're asking me if I agree to those conditions. The issue is, do I agree to follow the law? Of course I do, I'm not going to lose my license by not following the law, but do I agree to these particular conditions being imposed on us when it's really not in the ordinance itself? No, I have a fundamental issue with that.
I, 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 I agree with you.
Okay.
I don't think it's fair that the ordinance say one thing...
Mm-hmm.
...and that there be a blanket condition on everything else. I don't think that's right.
Right, so then why am I being asked to agree to it then?
Be that as it may, that's the city council's policy and going forward, that, and they can do that.
Right.
So, going forward, we just want, we want to ensure that people are simply going to abide by the policy, or else you can't have it.
Right.
It's just that simple.
So, as a law-abiding citizen, I'm going to abide by whatever you agree to.
Nobody's questioning your, 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 your law-abiding citizen-ness, okay?
How is it not? You're asking me if I'm going to abide by restrictions that are imposed by me, by the council or by the ordinance. So, my, my answer to you is, is yes, I have to abide by those ordinances, I'm, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't know why that's so difficult, this isn't hard.
Well, I, I don't know why you're making it hard.
We're not making it hard, I'm saying I can't agree, I can't agree or disagree to a condition that you've put on me, except to say that if you impose that condition on me, I'm going to, I'm going to comply.
That's not the point. The point is, if you're going to get a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental, the only way you're going to do it is with these conditions.
Correct.
So, if you tell the staff, no, I don't agree with it, that we don't know how to interpret it.
I don't understand how, how hard it is to, for someone to grasp this concept. I don't personally, the man said it back there, he's unfortunately left, I do not personally agree with what council is doing. I think that they are way out of bounds, to be honest with you. Quite honestly, I think that they're infringing on our property rights, but that's not before us right now. What's before us is, if you impose those conditions on us, we have no choice but to comply. You, you act like I'm saying, you impose one, uh, one per week and two people per room, that I'm going to go put my stuff, like other people have done, on the market and, and advertise three-bedroom, four-bedroom, whatever. And, and let me say this, they keep saying in the application that I have a three-bedroom. We keep informing them that it's not a three-bedroom. We're doing everything we can do to inform you guys, you can make a proper decision, but we, it's a roadblock after roadblock because of what?
I don't know, but I don't like your odds.
Well, you know what, I've lived with worse odds in my life, sir, I can promise you that.
Mr. Swango, Mr. Swango, I don't have any short-term rentals, but I've been an applicant in a lot of rezonings.
Yep.
And the, the way it is, whether you're in Chesterfield County, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, it doesn't really matter, um, you, you work with planning staff and they come up with conditions and you either accept those conditions or not, and then it comes to us.
Yeah.
Okay? What I'm hearing is, you don't accept the conditions.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you're hearing me.
And I'm not, I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get into that.
I don't think you're hearing me then.
Okay, well, I, I think I am, but I, I think you, you want to try to, you know, make this some sort of game or something and, and I mean...
Really?
You know, that's, that's the way it seems. It's, it's either you, it's either you agree to the stipulations that the city put in the application or you don't. Do you want to move forward with the stipulations, all the conditions, that the city has put in the application or not? Yes or no?
That's why I'm here to move forward.
Do you want to move forward under this?
That's why I'm here to move forward.
Okay, well then, what is, what is your answer? It's a yes or no?
It's not a yes or no, I already gave you my answer.
I have no further questions.
And I'll tell you, and I'll tell you something else, since, since we're on record, let me go ahead and just do this then. Am I speaking with, uh, Mr. Dyer, Mayor Dyer, indicated to me that every decision that they're making, every deci, in a private call, every decision that they're making is arbitrary and capricious. This is arbitrary and capricious, guys. This isn't fair to the, to the citizens of Virginia Beach, it's certainly not ser, fair to us.
Which is not fair to them.
You're imposing restrictions, ask me if I accept those restrictions. I accept the restrictions if you impose them. But I don't agree that, that city council should be doing this when the ordinance says something else, I'm, I'm with this man over here. But I don't understand, I, I don't understand where the disconnect is for y'all. That's, I mean, that's pretty simple, right? You're imposing restrictions and I'm saying if you impose them on me, I have to abide by them, but I don't agree with the fact that the city council's doing this to us, but if they wish to do it because they're the ones with the ring and they want us to kiss it, then so be it. That's their choice. What is so, I don't understand what's so difficult about that. Mr. Dyer himself told me it was arbitrary and capricious. And that's exactly what's going on right now with this commission, it's just not right. We just want to get, to go in front of the city council and say, here's our property, what are you going to do? That's it, that's all we're asking for. Are you going to, are they going to grant it or not? Just like we went for Five-Twenty-One and they granted it. They imposed the restrictions on me on Five-Twenty-One. They gave me the restriction of two per bedroom and one rental per week. I'm complying with what the restrictions were. That's what the city council imposed on me. Well, I mean, you asked me a question and I'm answering the questions. I'm trying to inform you on why I'm making the decision I'm making.
Is this your way of informing us?
Well, yeah, that's the only way I have, right? I'm supposed to stand up here at the podium and, and tell you guys what I've received and answer your questions, that's what I'm doing. What, do you expect something else from me?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
No, ma'am, we have no other speakers, and this is our final item.
Thank you very much. So, we're going to close this and open it up to the discussion with the commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Klein?
Um, might I respectfully suggest to the planning committee that they, uh, look at revising the language, um, because I...
I think that's, I mean, it's, it's kind of, I don't know, I don't know if it's...
So, I, I under, I understand the argument, I don't, people don't agree with wearing a mask, but they still wear one. Um, so I think that maybe that's where this agree or disagree and something like, I agree to abide by the conditions, um, may be more clear.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I agree with that, I think we're getting altogether, I mean, we've wasted probably a half an hour on semantics today. You have to agree to conditions. If you don't agree to conditions, you don't get it. What's that? Oh, yeah, accept, thank you. You have to accept the conditions. You can gripe about it, not like it at all, but you don't get your conditional use permit, and they're going to reject it, and they're going to pull your conditional use permit if you don't abide by. I don't think it's asking a lot of people to ask them, do you accept the conditions? And every single time we have this argument...
I totally agree.
I, we just, you know, and, and I still don't know what, I, I'm not quite sure what Mr. Swango's answer is.
Well, I think what it was, Mr. Redmond, I think, I think it would, it turned into a platform, um, to...
So...
You know, to, to voice a grievance. Um, anyway, I, I would, are we ready to make a motion?
Mr. Weiner would like to...
I'm sorry, I don't even have my mic on.
Mr. Weiner would like to say something?
From what I got out of that, kind of interesting, never seen it brought to us like that before, but it's, it was something new, it is 2020. Um, yeah, um, he accepts the conditions, but he just doesn't like it, bottom line. That's what I got out of it.
I don't want to interrupt, but we just need to make sure that all of your microphones are turned on when you're speaking.
So, Dee?
Yes, Mr.?
So, I heard the same thing that Mr. Weiner said, um, he knows of the conditions, he didn't say no, he didn't say yes. Um, I'm an advocate of, of as long as they meet the conditions or as long as their, the, the write-up, uh, shows that they meet the conditions, and there are conditions here. Um, just, uh, point of information, I did talk to the civic league, uh, there was no opposition. I went directly to the civic league and asked them, same thing, I should have noted that for the other one. But because the other one did, um, state they weren't agreement, but this one did not, um, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Mr. Weiner. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve it.
A second.
With the conditions as stated on the report.
I'll call for the vote now. Mr. Alvarez?
Aye.
Mr. Graham? Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Nay.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Nay.
With Mr. Barnes absent, Mr. Costin absent, and Mr. Inman absent, by a reported vote of seven to two, Agenda Item Number Sixteen has been approved. Six to two, sorry. And that, Madam Chair, was our final item.
Sorry, thank you very much. Um, Mr. DeHaan, do we have any more for today?
No, ma'am, I'll just remind the commission that we did at the beginning of the day, which has gone past us a little bit, uh, there is discussion about potentially doing a workshop at the end of the November, uh, hearing, uh, for us to discuss the potential short-term rental regulations that will be, um, remanded or sent to us by city council. Uh, during that, uh, November hearing, again, Tasha's not, uh, not here anymore because there was the time limit that we had at the beginning. Uh, we'll go over the legislative management, I believe you were emailed the information on legislative management earlier today, so hopefully we can get through that, uh, pretty quickly. quickly. So, we have no other planning items that I'm aware of. Carolyn, do you have something?
I'm sorry, according to the City Clerk's office, you do need to vote on the minutes of that joint, for your last joint meeting.
That's what I had thought, okay.
So, sorry about that.
So, we will hold, they were the minutes with, hold on one second, Mr. Redmond, what...
What's the date of that?
We have it right here. She's got it.
But I gotta, I gotta make a date of it.
The September 8th, 2020, Joint Special Formal Meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2020, the joint meeting of City Council.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
A second by Mr. Alcaraz.
Abstain.
You abstain, sir.
It was the, it was the joint one, yes. The last joint meeting.
All right, the vote is open. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley? Ms. Klein?
Abstain.
Mr. Redmond? Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
Our reported vote of five to, with three abstentions, the minutes from the joint use meeting have been approved.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, if there is any further business, if not on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone for attending, and thank the Planning Director and the staff very much for their excellent work always in preparing our agenda and the time that they put into it. Meeting's adjourned.